Tyler, can you go? That's the handouts before we do their presentations.
Okay, Madam Chair, you are live. Folks, you are live.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me? Hello. Welcome to the Monday, November 25th, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting. This meeting is now called to order. Thank you all for being here. Ms. Witten will now conduct the roll call for the Board of Supervisors.
Supervisor Lewis.
President.
Supervisor Day.
Your.
Supervisor Lyons.
Here.
Supervisor McDaniel.
Here.
Chair Ayers.
Here. The Board will be offering an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to join us, please stand.
Dear Lord, we pray and come to you in supplication with prayers of Thanksgiving in this season. We pray for discernment, and we pray for understanding and grace to do those things we ought to do. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any suggested changes to this agenda? Okay. Citizens' comments. At this time, the Board will be hearing comments from the members of the public. Comments pertaining to one of the two public hearings should be held until 6:00 PM. Rules for commenting are the same for both the citizens' comment period and the public hearings. Once your name is called, please address the board from the podium. Please state your first and last name, as well as your magisterial district, and limit your comments to no more than three minutes. If you're participating by Zoom, please use your raise your hand feature. If joining by phone, please press star nine. No one signed up? Okay, then we will move. Anyone online?
No one online with their hand raised.
Approval of the November 12th, 2024 minutes. Does anyone have any comments pertaining to the November 12th minutes? And if not, may I have a motion to adopt the minutes?
To move.
Second. Okay, Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
And Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And Chair votes yes. Consideration of the school appropriation resolution.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Harrison is out this week on a well-deserved break. So the Board received an appropriation resolution for the schools, the amount of $46,555. That was for Title, Title IV grants, as shown in your package. And be happy to answer any questions that you might have. But there is a resolution for approval. Consideration.
Take a motion to approve resolution. Ask present.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis. Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day. And the Chair votes yes. Consideration of the financial report and appropriation resolution. Mr. Suter will be presenting this item.
Yes, the Board received the financial memorandum and reports in your package. Just a couple of highlights. Year-to-date, year-to-date revenues, 33% of the year has passed. Sales are slightly up at 35% of budget. Meals are tracking just about right at 34%, and emissions are outpacing budget at 56%. The resolution in front of you is for payment of bills in the amount of $280,059.34.
Thank you, Mr. Suter. Motion. Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And the Chair votes yes. Consideration of financial advisor contract renewal with Davenport. Mr. Suter.
Yes, so the county is authorized under the cooperative procurement terms from RFP 2022-003 of Bedford County, Virginia, of course, to enter into a term contract with Davenport and Company LLC for financial advisory services. And staff, including the county attorney, Mr. Dryden, who's beside me, reviewed the procurement process and proposal from Davenport and Company LLC, with whom we've worked for many years, and recommended that they are satisfactory and advantageous to Rockbridge County at fair and reasonable prices. The agreement attached with Davenport's pricing sheet is attachment C. And we're requesting consideration to approve this attached resolution, authorizing me to take the necessary actions to enter into contract with Davenport.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Mr. Suter?
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Consideration of opioid settlement fund designation. Mr. Suter.
Yes. So you recall, now, in October, the Board received a presentation regarding potential uses of opioid funds. As you may recall, the county has and is slated to receive funds as a result of the class action suit, to which we, we and most Virginia localities are a party. Since we've already presented to the Board the details of the funds, I won't go back through the different pools of funds unless you prefer that I do so. I'm happy to, happy to do that. But the previously presented spreadsheet describing the, the fund breakout is attached. It's actually not a spreadsheet, it's a PDF of that spreadsheet. Thus far, Buena Vista and Lexington have committed most of their funds to Rockbridge Recovery's Hope House, located in Buena Vista. Their total expenditure to date is $109,585 from these opioid funds. The Hope House has been in operation for over a year and provides live-in rehabilitation services for male recovering addicts. Rockbridge County has dedicated its first two years of individual and gold standard funds. That's two of the, the three funds. The other, the other one is direct funds. And that totaled $39,986 to that Hope House project. The program was initiated by Rockbridge Community Foundation, led by Executive Lori Turner, who's with us tonight. As a gold standard locality, the county has agreed that it will only use the, the direct funds it receives in accordance with the requirements of Virginia Code Section 2.2, 2370A, which we've attached to this report. Finance Director Ashton Harrison, County Attorney John Dryden, have worked extensively to ensure that the proposed fund uses in front of you are in compliance with the gold standard as determined by the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority. We've received multiple inquiries over time. It's been going on for several years regarding fund use, and as opioid is a regional issue, staffs work with our counterparts, as noted, in Lexington and Buena Vista, seeking options, or seeking options, which would maximize the available opioid funding without leveraging local funds into the future. In addition, Rockbridge Recovery received a request for funding consideration for the stand-up and continued operations of, of a proposed Mari River Recovery Court. Previously, these were known as drug courts. In October, Buena Vista Commonwealth Attorney Josh Elrod presented the request for funding the recovered court, and this Jerry Shaft, he and Ms. Jerry Shaft presented the request for Rockbridge Recovery. The, the proposed fund uses are again listed in the, the PDF of the spreadsheet in your report. The largest portions of the uses are for the Rockbridge Recovery side of things. About $50,000 toward a women's facility set up similar to the men's facility. And $25,000 toward a fuel-efficient car to transport facility residents as needed, as, as was described in the, in your work session prior. And the second piece of this is the recovery court, and that's about $50,000 toward the cost of the first year for a recovery court coordinator position, and we believe the state's going to pick up the, the cost after that. Since the October meeting, staff has worked with parties, both parties provide what we feel is the most efficient way to distribute the funds, should the Board be in agreement. The Community Foundation has agreed to be the single recipient of the funds, to distribute them to Rockbridge Recovery and the Mari River Recovery Court, and to manage quarterly reporting to the county on the use of funds, which is particularly important to us, to make sure that we're using them in the correct way. Mr. Dryden's prepared an MOU with the Community Foundation whereby the county would grant all the direct funds it currently is holding, amounting to $144,644.92. The MOU includes restrictions on the use of funds to comply with the gold standard and to require quarterly reporting to the county on the use of the funds, as noted. Importantly, the, the grant funds are required to be returned to the county if they are not used in accordance with the gold standard requirements. Staff is requesting at the Board determine whether or not to make a grant of the direct funds in the amount of $144,654.92 to the Community Foundation to be distributed to Rockbridge Recovery and the Mari River Recovery Court, and authorize me to execute the memorandum of understanding. Mr. Elrod's got a conflict tonight and could not attend, however, as noted, previously, Ms. Turner with the Community Foundation is here to help answer any questions she may have. Sorry, that was mouthful, but I need to get.
No, thank you very much for that and your work on that. Turner?
So, as, as, as I shared, you know, I can do you guys about 18 months ago, we were just getting the men's home going at that time, since then, the Hope House is open, operating since last April. And we are moving forward with plans to have a women's facility as well, on the Rockbridge Recovery side, and then I've also been working with Josh Elrod on the recovery court, and their needs, and so I think the exploitation of the money requests have been put forth. If any question, let me know.
All righty. Gentlemen. Any questions?
I think, I think I know the answer, but both Buena Vista and Lexington have pledged funds to this project as well, correct?
They, they've pledged funds, they pledged almost all their funds to the first piece of it, which is Rockbridge Recovery. They, so they have pledged, I think, I think everything that they've received so far. And then this would, if the county pledged this, it would, that was towards the men's house. This would mainly go towards the, the, the women's, similar facility for women. And of course, the car that would serve both men and women.
Right.
Thank you. And, and if, and if you look at the spreadsheet, the reason the county is giving the last to the recovery court is because the city of Lexington and the city of Buena Vista did not give anything to the recovery court, and so we took all of their funds when we got together and put that into the recovery court, and the remaining funds for Rockbridge Recovery.
Right. That's it. Is there a motion to authorize the county administrator to execute the memorandum of understanding? Don't rush you. You've got plenty of time.
Oh, my.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I inject something before you take a break? I'm fine with, with the motion and all. Just, I want to be clear, because some of these funds are forthcoming over the next 15 to 20 years. If we don't get the funds, nobody else is getting it either. It's not coming out of our reserves or our operating budget. This is just the funds that we receive. And should the state not come through and pay their share of the recovery court piece, then I feel like we're out of it as well. We're only pledging what we get, it is, and then the state to pick up their share.
I, I think that memorandum is exactly that.
Yeah.
I do, I do understand Supervisor, where Supervisor McDaniel was coming from. Our experience has been that the, the state, when they stand, when a recovery court is stood up, they will come in and fund it. However, I, I agree that, you know, if, if we don't receive funds from the state, it's going to be difficult for me to come back to the Board and say, should we have these funds?
Thank you for that clarification. So, I believe we had a, a motion by Mr. Lyons and was that Mr. Lewis was the second? Or Mr. Day? Okay, Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis. And I vote yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, we have public hearings at 6:00 PM, so we will take a 12. Do we have anything else?
Nothing. Typically, you, you leave board comments to the end of the meeting.
I, I believe we'll do that. And so we will take a 12-minute, 13-minute break.
Okay.
Number 10, which is the ordinance to amend the MSA Articles of Incorporation. Mr. Dryden.
We came before the Board in our last board meeting to give some explanation for there's the need for amendment to the MSA Articles of Incorporation. And recap of that is the MSA Articles of Incorporation actually require that particular projects, that the Arts and Corporation actually authorize the particular projects that the MSA engages in. They don't have the authority to finance other projects except for those which are actually listed in their Arts and Corporation. Therefore, that requires an amendment of the Articles of Corporation from time to time when new projects need to be built and financed. What's before the Board today? In our last meeting, the Board instructed the staff to set a public hearing, so we've set the public hearing for today to discuss the amendments to the MSA Articles of Incorporation and the particular project which you're seeking to finance. What they're seeking to finance is, I'm going to pull up my board notes here, an extension to acquire, construct, rehabilitate, and equip the MSA's water system relating to facilities, including but not limited to replacing, upgrading. upgrading water transmission lines along the Route 11 bypass and other water supplement and transmission upgrades, and authorization to pay costs connected with related financings. And so they're, they're, this, they're expected to finance approximately four million US dollars in order to, to move forward with this project. So we're set to have the public hearing today and Mr. Jordan Combs from MSA is here to present.
I think Jordan's back here somewhere to answer any questions that you may have. I don't know if he's presenting. Jordan, are you here?
Okay.
And the number, I think it's not to exceed 4.5 million.
Shall we do that before, would you like me to open the public hearing and have Jordan as part of that or?
I think if you've got any questions, it's appropriate to go ahead and ask them before the public hearing. So you can get the answer. So if anybody wants to comment, they, they can after hearing that.
Jordan. Gentlemen.
And Jordan is the executive director of the MSA.
Thank you, Mr. Combs. Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
May I also note that the city of Lexington and city of Buena Vista passed this or signed on to this joint resolution on Thursday.
Anything for Mr. Combs? Well, that was quick. Would you like to, okay, but if you'll be on standby for any questions we may have.
I've got one further note. The, the cost of the, of the debt service on this is already built into the, the MSA's rates.
Correct.
Well, I will open the public hearing then. No one signed up. Is there anybody online?
The one with the hand raised.
All right. Anybody else that would like to speak to this issue? If not, I will close the public hearing. Any other board discussion? Fine. Is your motion?
I believe we through the ordinance to amend the articles again.
Do you mind? Okay. Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Number 11.
May I also note that we are moving ahead and continuing discussions to bring something to all the boards and councils to consider, to potentially adjust the articles. And we've been working on this for quite some time.
We look forward to it.
Chair, if I might add to, I think it would be pertinent to denote as rates were mentioned that MSA has engaged to have a company as well. The experience that I've had with them on the Rockbridge County side has been positive. So, so we've engaged them to look at us and look at finances and as well as help design rates so that we, we're, we're being as fiscally responsible as possible and also as, as right, we're smoothing, you know, the expenditures. So we know what other projects are on, on the county's eye or on the county's horizon. I know the capital improvement plans have been shared, so we're just pointing out we're, we're working together.
Thank you for sitting on that board and doing that for the supervisors. Warm Run Solar LLC.
Chair, I have something else I'd like to say.
Okay, go right to it.
In accordance with my, with the opinion letter I received from the Commonwealth's attorney, I state the following again. I serve as a director on the Board of BARC Electric Cooperative.
Mr. Lewis, there you go.
In accordance with the opinion letter I received from the Commonwealth's attorney, I state the following again. I serve as a director on the Board of BARC Electric Cooperative, which is in the same industry as the applicant Warm Run Solar. Therefore, I have a personal interest in the consideration of Warm Run Solar's application. However, under the Conflict of Interest Act, I am not disqualified, disqualified from participation in this matter. My disclosure statement is on file with the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Slayton?
Chairperson, members of the board. Tonight's application is for Warm Run Solar. The Huffman slash Warm Run Solar Special Exception Application as a public utility in the Agricultural Transitional Zoning District. Start by briefly reviewing the zoning in the area. The Huffman track that's under consideration is highlighted in orange. As you can see in the map, the, the property is located in the agricultural transitional area, which is the, which is the light pink on the map and, and essentially surrounded by the agricultural transitional area excluding the northeastern corner that's adjacent to business zoning. So the dark red on the map is the business. In fact, I'm going to turn this into a PowerPoint or option. This area is zone business, the dark red. This area is zoned agricultural transitional. Across the interstate is the Ponds Development Zone Residential R1. And then across the interstate, that, that would be Interstate 64 and 81, is zoned agricultural. That would be the A2 zoning district. You can also see on here that the, the properties do have some floodplain associated with it. That's considered, and that's the, the purple overlay district. And that is considered Zone A, which is a portion of the 100-year floodplain. Details on the Huffman track as a whole. This map shows the Huffman's total land holding, holdings in this area. The, the holdings consist of four parcels that are outlined in orange. The four parcels total 166.723 acres per tax records and ranging in acreage sizes from 7.32 to 79.773 being the largest. Currently, all parcels are vacant and being utilized for cattle grazing. Again, Warm Run Solar LLC, 107 Fifth Street, Charlottesville, Virginia, has made an application for a special exception permit to develop a 3.00 megawatt, that's AC power, solar project. The property is identified as tax map number 62-12-B1 and is located on the east side of Lincoln Road. Lincoln Road is further identified as seven, Route 763, approximately 0.52 miles south of the intersection of Lincoln Road and North Lee Highway. North Lee Highway, of course, is, is further identified as Route 11. Access to the proposed solar site is from Warm Run Road. Warm Run Road is further identified as Route 788. The property is owned by Robert F. Huffman, trustee, with a mailing address of 1318 Mount Atlas Road, Lexington, Virginia. Property is located in the South River Magisterial District. Again, the property is in the agricultural transitional zone, the A2 zoning district per Section 603B.03-14 of the County of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations. Public utilities are a use by special exception in the AT zoning district. The 3.0, the proposed 3.00 megawatt AC power solar facility is proposed to be located on approximately 34 acres of the Huffman track, further identified as tax map 62-12-B1. That particular track is outlined in orange and consists of 56 acres per tax records. So what we're looking at here is obviously the outline of the 56-acre track is, is located here. Proposed access from Warm Run. And then the, the green on the areas is the approximate location of the Finston area. As far as action taken by the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors at the August 14th, 2024 meeting, Planning Commission meeting, excuse me, the commission held its public hearing. The public hearing was closed. The commission set the matter over for the next meeting of the Planning Commission on September 11th, 2024. At the September 11th, 2024 meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the special exception application with conditions doing due to a member being on vacation and being out of the comm health. One member joined the meeting remotely via Zoom in accordance with the commission's electronic meeting policy. The vote to recommend approval of the application was approved on a three to two vote. With one of the members, well, with a three to two vote, commission members Whitmore, BB, and Sabrize, excuse me, voted to recommend approval. And commission members Sandridge and Kammer voted against it. After the September 11th, 2024 meeting, modifications to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3708.3D, which went into effect July 1st, 2024, were discovered. The modifications include the requirement that a public body, in this case, the Planning Commission, annually adopt its electronic meeting policy. The Planning Commission previously adopted its electronic meeting policy on October 12th, 2022. Until the July 1st, 2024 updates, the code, there were no requirements to annually adopt the electronic meeting policy. Mr. Sabrinsky follows, Sabrinsky, excuse me, Sabrizey followed all other requirements, including the availability and procedures of the Planning Commission Electronic Meeting Policy. At the time of the September 11th, 2024 meeting, the Planning Commission and staff was unaware of the modifications to code section. After the, the September 11th, 2024 meeting, additional conditions that could be associated with the application was, were discussed. They include conditions associated with combating fires at solar facilities and a contribution to the county per section Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-2288, period 8. At its October 28th, 2024 meeting, the Board of Supervisors moved the matter of the Warm Run Solar Special Exception Application be remanded to the Planning Commission for further consideration and a vote. And the vote included that the Planning Commission be granted additional 30 days to, in which to take action on the application. Excuse me. The board also instructed for the Planning Commission to make a determination whether Warm Run Solar Project is in substantial compliance with the comprehensive plan. That's commonly referred to as the 2232 Comprehensive Plan Review. At its November 13th, 2024 meeting, the Planning Commission approved a resolution stating the reasonings that it was determined that the project is in substantial compliance with the 2024 Comprehensive Plan. Per Code of Virginia, 15.2-2232B, the governing body may overrule action of the Planning Commission by a vote of the majority of its members, membership. Therefore, the Board of Supervisors has the ability to overturn this determination. Let me pause there. It's somewhat unusual because obviously with the special exception application itself, the Planning Commission has an advisory role to the Board of Supervisors. So they would be making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, to the governing body on, on approving with conditions or denying the special exception permit. The 2232 review is different in that is, that is a formal determination by the Planning Commission. So I did want to clarify that. And if appropriate, I'll go ahead and read each condition as Planning Commission. At its November 13th, in addition to taking action on approving the resolution, the 2232 review, if you will, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the special exception with the imposition of the following conditions. Number one, and there are 20 of them, so bear with me here. Number one, the development of the property parcel 62-12-B1, 56 acres per tax records for which the application is being, being made shall be substantially in accordance with the conceptual site plan titled Warm Run Solar LLC, prepared by Sun Tribe Development dated April 4th, 2024, with a revision date of July 3rd, 2024. Number two, seeding plan. At minimum, 75% of the area under the panel zone area shall be planted with a seed mix comprised of at least 50% native species. The seed mix under the panel zone shall be contained at minimum. One native grass species, species for the panel zone area shall be shade tolerant. For this condition, the panel zone area shall be defined as the area directly under the panels as well as in the rows between the solar panel as well as a 20-foot offset from the perimeter of the outmost panels. Number three, open area pollinator plant. At minimum, 75% of the open air, excuse me, open area slash pollinator area shall be planted with 15 species that are included in the Virginia Solar Site Native Plant Finder. And it goes on to give a website at minimum. Open area pollinator area would include two native species flowering during each of the same flowering periods, flowering periods, spring, early summer, late summer, and fall. For this condition, the open area pollinator area shall be defined as area between the panel zone area and the perimeter of the security fence, not to include the stormwater facilities. Number four, areas of grading. Cut to accommodate the array will be limited to 35% of the panel zone area or approximately 6.5 out of the 19 areas, 19 acres as described on sheet P105 of the conceptual site plan titled Warm Run Solar LLC, prepared by Sun Tribe Development dated April 4th, 2024, with a revision date of July 3rd, 2024. The site is suitable for a solar facility without significant changes to the topography and earthwork will be designed and conducted to balance the quality, the quantity, excuse me, of cut and fill required. No soil to be removed from subject property. Onto number five. The maximum height of the solar array at maximum tilt shall be 15 feet. Number six, acceptance of a decommissioning agreement by the project owner slash developer incorporating the decommissioning plan dated December 8th, 2023, subject to a Virginia licensed engineered certification of the decommissioning cost and providing financial assurance of such performance to the county based upon the engineered certified estimates as approved by the county and outlined in Virginia Code Section 15.2-2241, period 2. Number seven. Submit a bond irrevocable letter of credit, cash escrow, or other appropriate surety in the amount of the certified estimate of the cost for landscaping improvements, including insulation. At the discretion of the zoning administrator, the surety or portion thereof for landscaping may be held in force for a period of no longer than 36 months from the date of the planting materials, provided that the landscape materials have been specified, planted, and maintained in healthy condition. Number eight. At the time of site plan review, the planning, excuse me, the applicant shall provide the zoning administrator a written panel specification and compensation, composition disclosure document. Projects shall comply with accredited, accepted national environmental protection and product safety standards for use of solar panels for solar photovoltaic parentheses, electric energy projects. Such existing project certification and standards to include the International Electro and Technical Commission, number 61215-2, Institute of Electrical and Electronic Engineering Standards 1547, and Underwriters Laboratories Number 61730-2. The, the site plan shall reference the safety standards and how the project safety standards will be met. Number nine. The facility shall, the facility shall only use panels that employ anti-glare technology, anti-reflective coatings, and other available mitigation techniques that meet or exceed industry standards to reduce glint and glare. Number 10, compliance with Section 1303.03, General Lighting Requirements, and Section 3, 1303, period 04, general design requirements of the County of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations. Blinking and/or flashing lights are prohibited. Number 11, all excavation and construction deliveries and decommissioning activities shall be limited to hours of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. Number 12, excavation, construction, deliveries, and decommission activities shall be prohibited on Sundays. Number 13, implementation of the project must occur within 36 months from the date of the special exception permit approval. Project substantial completion must occur within 18 months of the date of implementation with up to a four-month extension of substantial completion date upon written request by the applicant and landowner or landowners to the zoning administrator detailing the reasonings for the extension. Number 14, approval contingent upon Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT, ENS and stormwater, excuse me, erosion sediment control slash stormwater management approvals and all applicable state and federal regulations. Number 15, a construction management plan will be submitted at site plan review approval that outlines method per VDOT work area protection manual to mitigate impacts to the movements of traffic of warm run road. Prior to the construction, the project owner shall provide a letter to all adjoining properties of the of the Huffman tracks. And that would include all current Huffman tracks to the zoning administrator notifying them of this the start date of excavation, construction activities. Additionally, the letter shall provide a contact name and phone number of the neighborhood traffic liaison or onsite delivery representative that will be responsible for communication throughout the construction phase of the project. Number 16, prior to the construction of the solar facility, the project owner shall provide contact information for the site manager to the chief of the Department of Fire Rescue and Emergency Management. The contact information shall include the name, title, address, email and phone number of the site manager and shall notify the chief within seven days of a change of contact information. Number 17, a knock box housed with a key to the facility shall be placed at the gate of the facility. The chief of the Department of Fire Rescue and Emergency Management shall be notified prior to the placement of the knock box. Number 18, the project owner shall, within 30 days of activation of the solar facility, contact the chief of the Department of Fire Rescue and Emergency Management to coordinate a facility walkthrough for preparation and training as it relates to emergency responses to fires. Number 19. After construction, final plans and digital forms shall be sent to the chief of the Department of Fire Rescue and Emergency Management, showing the location of knock box placement and the location of disconnection and isolation switches associated with the facility. Number 20, the no blasting and or use of explosives shall be utilized for excavation, for the excavation slash construction of the project. Furthermore, the planning commission, so those are the one through 20 that the planning commission has has recommended to impose on the property. Furthermore, included in the in the statement by the planning commission states, furthermore, the planning commission recommended, recommends that the board of supervisors consider granting the following condition as suggested by the applicant. In accordance with Virginia code section 15.2 dash 2288 point 8, payment equal to $45,000 shall be made to the county within three months following the trade permit approval. Such sum shall be earmarked and expended by the county for construction of substantial public improvements the need for, which is not generated solely by granting of the special exception permit, special exception permit. The county administration is in the process of discussing this condition with Chief Nathan Ramsey with the Department of Fire Rescue and Emergency Management to determine the best utilization of the funds if the special exception were be to approved and the branch board grants this additional condition. After further review of the suggested condition, the words construction of could cause issue. Therefore, it has been modified with approval of the applicant to remove the words construction of. Again, if this special exception permit was approved and the board grants this conditional additional condition. And I would like to pause there before my last slide. It is, you've heard me emphasize the word grants and impose. Per section, the the board has some unique state law associated with section 15.2 dash 2288 point 8 that the board may grant a condition associated what is what is on the table. And I'd use those emphasis because I'm always used to the board of supervisors imposing conditions. And so it is somewhat unusual that the General Assembly a few years ago gave the governing bodies the ability to grant such a condition. So I did make want to make that distinction between the two. Lastly, the planning commission discussed the impact of a neighbors and potential well collapse. And it was suggested that a bond could be provided to cover any such incidental damage. On November 19th, 2024, Mr. Tyler McGilvery, associated, associate project developer, sent a draft condition that may be imposed to attempt to address this concern. Address this concern, staff has modified the suggested condition to read. Prior commencing construction activities, the project owner slash developer shall provide evidence to the zoning administrator of a surety bond in the amount of $30,000 to cover any damages on on to the well on parcel number 62 dash 20, excuse me, 62 dash 12 dash B2 directly caused by the construction activities. Such surety bond naming the owner of parcel number 62 dash 12 dash B2 as payee with conditions of the payment being that number one, the independent and independent professional engineer license in the Commonwealth selected by the county whose fees shall be shall be the obligation of the project owner slash developer certifies as to the damage and causation. And number two, the owner of parcel number 62 dash 12 dash B2 has provided the applicant with access to the well before, during and after construction for inspection and testing. The project owners slash developer shall keep the bond in place until the commissioning of the facility. With that, I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Tyler McGilvery, Associate Project Developer with Sun Tribe and let him introduce his team. And he also has a brief presentation for y'all.
Good evening. My name is Tyler McGilvery. I was born and raised in the Commonwealth and have been working with farmers to preserve their farms and family properties here for almost a decade. My work began in traditional land conservation with the Virginia Outdoors Foundation. And now I work with landowners to design well-sighted, community-conscious solar projects such as Warm Run. This is work that I'm deeply passionate about and extremely proud of. That's my story and why I'm here. But more importantly, the story is about the Huffman family and their farm. Their legacy on this land and their goal to preserve this land for future generations. I'm excited to share our project with you tonight, and I'm here seeking the board of supervisors approval. Warm Run is a small solar facility that operate, that occupies less than 35 acres of a 56 acre parcel, which is a portion of a larger 166 acre family farm. It's an opportunity for the landowner and the county to preserve this land for decades by the way of a low impact and temporary use. This allows the property to stay in the family for generations and prevents the land from being sold for more intensive, permanent residential or commercial uses. As someone who remembers things when they're provided to me in list form, I'd like to give you four points about what Warm Run Solar will do. The first point, Warm Run will benefit the community. The power produced by this facility will be consumed 100% locally, not sent to Northern Virginia for its cities or data centers. The project will provide over $500,000 in direct revenue for the county while drawing on no county services. It will also provide approximately $2 million in indirect benefits during construction. The second point, Warm Run will fit into the landscape. Located between three major highways adjacent to existing commercial uses and located on a small portion of the family farm, Warm Run is located in an area where the county encourages development. The third point, Warm Run will steward the land respectfully. Unlike other permanent uses of this property, the project will be fully removed at the end of its life and the land can be returned to agriculture. This project also improves the site by moving from passive to active stormwater management through robust local and state regulations. The fourth point, Warm Run will be a good neighbor. The project is well-hidden and well-screened from nearby interstates and properties. Warm Run is a known and predictable quantity. This is a passive and quiet use with no dust, odor or noise during operation. Throughout the remaining slides, I plan to demonstrate how Sun Tribe develops solar differently than other projects you may have seen in the news or in other parts of the county. Oftentimes I get asked, what does this project do for me? So I'd like to keep it high level for a minute and talk about the tangible benefits that Warm Run Solar provides both the county and the community. First and foremost, 100% of the electricity produced will be consumed locally. This project is not putting the electricity bill for Northern Virginia cities or data centers. Solar projects are a great addition to the local economy and they bring in money without drawing on county services. This is a non-permanent use that will generate over $500,000 for Rockbridge County. This is, this projection comes directly from Rockbridge County Tax Code. During construction, it's estimated that there will be an indirect economic impact in benefit to the county totaling approximately $2 million. This project will also be a local source of zero emission energy production from a long-term and reliable energy source, the sun. Everyone here is relying on electricity, no matter how it's generated. And everyone benefits if electricity prices decrease. By way of example, Old Dominion Electric Cooperative, which supplies power to Bark Electric, estimated tens of thousands of dollars per year in savings to Bark members for a three megawatt project that's been approved here in Rockbridge County. Finally, there are two state level programs that this project can enter into. One of the really cool ones is the shared solar program and that program directly benefits low-income subscribers in this community. Warm Run Solar is a small project. This is a three megawatt solar project with no battery storage component and it's well-sighted near existing commercial uses. The project will connect to existing 12 5 KV distribution power lines onsite. The facility will be well-screened from nearby properties and will be less visible than the nearby Ford dealership, home center, hotels and other commercial developments. Importantly, the project will be well-hidden from Route 11 and interstates 81 and 64. I know you might be looking at this project and thinking about the project in Fairfield that's clearly visible from Interstate 81. I can say unequivocally that this project is not that project and it will not look like that. Warm Run is smaller, will have significantly less grading and contains greater buffers and setbacks from the interstates. Preserving the view shed is very important to me. And that's why a lot of energy was put into the project's thoughtful location, setbacks and supplemental buffering. The buffering specifically has been improved throughout the review process based on feedback from county staff and neighbors. That's why in addition to existing vegetation, we've proposed a 25 foot wide vegetative buffer along three sides of the project totaling roughly 4,500 feet. In terms of setbacks, the panels are 250 feet from the closest residence and over 1,300 feet from the closest residence on Warm Run Road. As I said, a lot of care was taken into choosing the location for this project. Citing the project on a small portion of a larger 166 acre family farm provides three distinct benefits. The first and most important for our landowner, it allows him to keep the farm in the family. The second, by utilizing only a portion of the family farm, this allows the remaining 130 acres to remain in agriculture. Finally, it provides significant setbacks to adjacent properties and residences specifically to the north of the project. This project is unique in the fact that there are actually only two parcels adjacent to this project parcel that are not owned by our landowner. One of them is the Ford dealership and the other is the property to the south. This was intentionally done to mitigate as many impacts as possible to neighbors. Warm Run Solar also aligns with the Rockbridge County Comprehensive Plan. It is zoned ag transitional, which the county defines as an area that provides a buffer between more rural and more urban areas. It's within a suburban service area, which the county defines as areas where development is encouraged. It's also adjacent to existing B1 uses. Finally, the project also promotes many of the comprehensive plan's goals, objectives and strategies as explicitly outlined in our project's application narrative. For more information on that, it was provided in the application narrative on pages 14 through 17. So what does it look like for Warm Run to be the good neighbor that I truly believe it can be? Well, that work has been ongoing since the first community meeting. Most recently, I was able to meet with the landowner to the south, the Davis family and answer some questions and concerns that they had. I really tried to meet them where they are at with their concerns and though nothing has been finalized yet, I commit to continuing that work. During the last planning commission meeting, the concern about a well on the property to the south of the project was raised by the Davis family and some of the commissioners. At the county and landowner's request, we have proposed a $30,000 surety bond be posted, which will be available in the event that the well on the property is impacted by construction activities of the project. As a reminder, a report was also shared with the county and the Davis family from a third-party professional engineer at TerraCon, which stated that no wells on the property would be adversely affected by the construction activities of Warm Run Solar. Getting back to Warm Run is a low-impact use. I often hear from neighbors that the interim land use such as solar is preferred to houses, which have been referred to as the last crop. A gentleman stood up at another, at another one of my public hearings recently and said, panels may not have been my first choice, but I certainly prefer them over a subdivision. This is a sentiment that I've heard echoed countless times, given the permanent nature of other types of byright uses and the increase in lighting, traffic and noise that they would bring to the neighborhood. Warm Run Solar is predictable. For the life of the project, there will be no uncertainty around the use of the property. Will it be a 70-plus home subdivision? A public school or a public service building? All of which are permitted uses for the property? No, it will be a passive, quiet neighbor with no light pollution and virtually no increase to traffic. That brings me to construction. And there have always been questions on this. There have been some comments previously that construction will take way longer than it actually will. I have a real example from a project that is being built right now that my colleague John was actually onsite last week at. They will have completed the construction for a three-megawatt project in less than five months. The eight to 10-month timeframe that was included in the narrative accounts for things like site stabilization, facility testing and erosion and sediment control and stormwater closeouts and approvals. This is all low-intensity and low-traffic work. It's literally waiting for the grass to grow and making sure that the testing of the facility is up to par. This is going to lot, look a lot more like the maintenance phase of this project rather than construction phase of this project. So that would be after the five-month construction period. The part of the construction that I also perceive that most people are concerned about is the installation of the piles. For a project like this, that is expected to take three to four weeks. Specialized crews with specialized equipment are the ones that are most likely to complete this work and they're extremely motivated to get onsite and offsite as quickly as possible. During the construction of this project, the project is also committed to being as good of a neighbor as possible. This includes prohibiting all activities on Sunday and providing a community liaison to address any questions or concerns from the neighbor. A traffic memo was also proactively provided to the county in advance of the construction traffic management plan that will be finalized before construction to alleviate concerns on that front. After construction is complete, the project will be a quiet neighbor with basically no traffic, no noise and 24/7 remote monitoring for the life of the project. Warm Run will be a temporary steward of the land, allowing it to return to its current state after the project life. The project will not impact streams or wetlands and even exceeds the county's required setbacks for those water features. The property in its current state has the potential for unmanaged runoff. Warm Run mitigates this with robust stormwater management controls to protect the land and local waterways. Solar panels are safe for the environment. They do not leach and they produce no noise, lighting and virtually no traffic. I want to take an extra minute on this as we've heard concerns in meetings leading up to tonight and expect that we will hear some today. The safety of these panels is extremely important to me and I would not be standing up here presenting this project to you all if these panels were harmful to people or the environment. We submitted two studies with our application confirming the safety of these facilities. I know that they're both long, but they show that the main components of the facility are steel, aluminum, glass and silicon and they're sealed from the outside environment. Similarly, to electronic devices and appliances that we have in our home, lead is used in trace amounts for soldering. But the NC State study that was submitted with the application explicitly states that even worst, in worst-case scenarios, panels pose no harm to people or the environment. I will move on to something that we also get a lot of questions about, decommissioning. At the end of Warm Run's operational life, the entire facility is required to be removed. The facility materials will be resold, repurposed. The facility materials will be resold, repurposed, or recycled as practical. This decommissioning process requires oversight and approval from the county and will be entirely paid for by the project. Not the landowner, not the neighbors, and not the county. To guarantee this, the removal is paid for upfront, held by the county, and it's updated every five years to make sure that the capital is available when the time comes to remove the project. This is further outlined in Condition 6. After decommissioning, the land, which is still owned by the landowner and his family, can be returned to agriculture at their discretion. I'd like to take a moment to thank the Board of Supervisors and the Rockbridge County Planning Department for the opportunity presented tonight. We've been working with our landowner since 2021 and with staff on this project since February of 2023. Now, a brief bit about Sun Tribe. Sun Tribe was founded and is based in Virginia, and we care deeply about the Commonwealth and Rockbridge County. I grew up camping and hiking here, and several of my colleagues have family here. As proud Virginians and leaders of the industry, Sun Tribe is the founding member of a solar workforce development organization called Shine, which helps drive job creation in the state, and we also sit on the Virginia Governor's Clean Energy Advisory Board. So let's get back to my four points about what Warm Run Solar will do. First, Warm Run will benefit the community. The power produced in this facility will be consumed 100% locally. The project will provide $500,000 in direct revenue to the county without drawing on county services, and will have $2 million in indirect benefit during construction. The second point, Warm Run will fit into the landscape. Located between three major highways, adjacent to existing commercial uses, and on a small portion of the family farm, Warm Run is located in a location where the county encourages development. Third, Warm Run will steward the land respectfully. Unlike other permanent uses of this property, the project will be fully removed at the end of the project life, and the land can be returned to agriculture. This project also improves the site by moving from passive to active stormwater management through robust local and state regulations. Fourth and finally, Warm Run will be a good neighbor. The project is well-hidden and well-screened from nearby interstates and properties. Warm Run is a known and predictable quantity. This is a passive, quiet, and unlit use with no dust, odor, or noise during operation. As a reminder, parcels in the AT zoning district can be subdivided into two-acre lots. This parcel specifically could become 24 homes, while the entire parcel could become well over 70 homes. This project is low-impact. It harms no one, and it has significant and tangible benefits to the county. Thank you for your time. Before, before taking questions, I also wanted to quickly speak to the NSF-ANC 457 certification that Chris spoke about and that the Planning Commission removed from Proposed Condition 8 on November 13th. My colleague Trevor and I have spoke at length about this, both with the county and with Planning Commission, and I wanted to provide kind of one last update and one last piece of due diligence. The language for this condition came from Louisa County. So last week, I actually spoke with Louisa County's Deputy Director of Community Development, and he shared that he wasn't aware of NSF-ANC 457 despite it being in their ordinance. The county is currently going through an ordinance amendment process, and based on the information that I shared with him, which is the exact same information that was shared with Rockbridge County staff and the Planning Commission, he said that it seemed like something that they needed to bring up and potentially bring up for removal. So he actually invited Sun Tribe to come to Louisa, present on that, and I look forward to taking him up on that opportunity.
Thank you for that update. Prior to the public hearing, I'd like to note that we have received written comments from the following residents on this matter. Amanda Baxter, Bill and Catherine Clements, John Huffman, Robert Huffman, Penny Patterson, Warm Run Citizens LLC, Fred Fevrier, Susan and Jennifer Showalter, Alan Stout, and Butch Snow.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I would like to note that some of you may have seen me leave, Mr. McCully, brought a handout, and if anybody would like one, I put them in the front, or we can pass them around. I just counted, and I didn't make enough. I made 50, so. But if anybody would like it, it's just some additional information, and anything the board gets, we like to make sure the public gets as well.
Thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing.
First, assigned up to speak is Rob Huffman, followed by Brian Causey.
Mr. Huffman. Let me just remind you to please, at the podium, state your name and your magisterial district. And we have a three-minute, we ask you to, to wrap up your comments in three minutes.
I'd like to also remind everybody to please speak into the mic so we can get it on the record.
My name's Robert Huffman, and I'm in Walker's Creek District. I haven't appeared at any of these meetings until now, but I've reached out to many, to every planning commissioner, several neighbors, and all of you. It seems that my neighbors' comments have been heard, and I want to make sure that my opinions are considered as well. This prod, this project is essential to us having the ability to secure the property and our family for the next 40 to 50 years, as well as giving us some financial security for the future. Renting this farm for pasture does little more than cover the tax obligation for the property. This project would also allow more freedom for the county from increased tax revenue, as well as providing clean energy for its residents. We check, we chose Sun Tribe for a reason, because we believe that they have a strong core value and they're a Virginia-based company with a proven track record working with other municipalities. It is impossible to make, to make everyone happy, but we certainly have tried our best through this process. At the end of the day, this is our land, and we need to do what's best for our family and our, and our community. There are several other options available for my family with this property, but we chose this option not only because it helps us to hold on to our property, but it seemed to be a less invasive and would cause the least disturbance to both the property and the neighbors in the long run. The bottom line is, small-scale solar is a business opportunity we have chosen to allow us to keep, keep our farm in the family and in agriculture. This opportunity was appealing because the project is removed at the end of its life, and my family gets our land back. Thank you, guys, for considering this project.
Thank you, Mr. Huffman.
Brian Causey, followed by Torben Pedersen.
My name is Brian Causey. I'm in South River District. And I think everybody in here has heard the good, the bad, the ugly of this deal here. I live on the Davis property as a rental, and I'd like to, everybody to ask themselves, how would you like to put up with the construction, the noise, the dust, and everything else? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Pedersen, followed by Terrace DeWalt, I believe.
Good evening. Torben Pedersen, Natural Woods District. This project, I cannot see from my house. However, we have a lot of people in Rockbridge County who can see it, even though they are saying it is hidden. Rockbridge County is not all flat land. We got mountains all around. We got people complaining when they see power lines. Here's the thing, if we begin to get into this slippery slope of building these solar fields or farms, as some people call it, we cannot live off of that. It's good for a while for people, however, recycling of solar panels is something that is extremely difficult and extremely costly. I don't think they can really recycle the panels themselves. They'll have to be buried in landfills. And what is that going to do for our environment? This is what this is all about, isn't it? Environment. Rockbridge County has the most beautiful area in the country, not just this country, but other countries as well. And I think that we should be very much careful how we spend our agricultural land away from that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Terry DeWalt, I believe it is, followed by Cynthia Jones.
Terry DeWalt, I live in the Courage Creek District. I'd like for you all to ask yourself, why do you live here? I moved here from Florida three years ago because of the beauty. And as, we moved here before the first winter, and so when the first winter came, I see nothing but junk cars piled up in people's yards and stuff. I've got a neighbor down the street from me who's doing a junkyard out of cars, and it's just devaluing our, our property values. And I believe it's y'all's responsibility, maybe I'm wrong, but excuse me if I am, to uphold our property values, not destroy them. Where I lived in Florida, they built two solar fields. I passed it every day, seven days a week working. I see these solar fields. And not only did it just take away the beauty of the place, after a few years, they started looking rundown. And today, I don't even know if they're operational anymore, but they look terrible. They can make them sound like they're wonderful. They can show pictures like they're wonderful, but in reality, they're not. They are not. They devalue our properties. My property value was increased by $92,000, and the guy, when I asked him about it, he said, "Well, based on your neighborhood." Well, three houses down from me, I got a guy who's putting a junkyard in, and nobody is stopping him. He has a burnt-down house. He lives in an old garage, and he has 60 or 70 junk cars around, and it's increasing every single day. I don't see how this is going to uphold the property value of the people that live there, and especially five, six years down the road. They can show you all the pictures they want, but it's not going to look like that five or six years. That I can almost guarantee. And he's repeated himself multiple times. The life of the, how long is the life of it? What's the expected life? Nobody's ever said it. And what I see around here especially is, everything is just abandoned in place. Everywhere you look, there's abandoned houses, running down property values around them. I haven't heard anything about the expected life of it. But on top of it, again, it doesn't matter. I don't think it should be built here. There's plenty of other places you can go and find where it won't impact people's homes or property values. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Cynthia Jones, followed by Susan Showalter.
Cynthia Jones, Cars Creek District. My family has lived on Lincoln Road for almost 69 years, and we are very opposed to the placement of the Warm Run Solar Farm. For the last almost 50 years, we have been fighting special exception permits and zoning. Our property is located roughly a half-mile south of the proposed solar farm. And in the last 50 years, we have had to deal with, first in the 1970s, two different times of rock quarries and asphalt plants based on the former Warmadoff Farm, which is right across from our house. Now that's the side of the ponds, which produces lights in our windows at night, and we had blasting with that when that came up in the 2000s. Then rezoning and special permits gave us the wastewater treatment plant on one side of our property. So we have a variety of noxious odors floating through the air at all times. We have nighttime noise from that. We have trucks grinding up the hill right beside our house. Next, the cattle farm directly across from us became the ponds, more blast, more construction, and as I mentioned, the light shining in the windows. Then in 2013, we were blessed with a contractor excavator storage yard on the other side of our property closer to the fence line. More dump trucks grinding, dump trucks dumping and clanging during the day. Noise, vibration when other assorted equipment is sitting in, on the storage yard right next to the house, you can see on the house. And our quality of life has been very adversely affected by some of the zoning changes around us, and we're especially concerned for three, about three areas for this project. First of all, the, whatever needs to be done to install the panels, drilling, I'm not sure exactly what's involved with that, but we had a transmission line rebuild for Dominion Power in our back field, very close to our back fence on our property. They only work four days a week. They only put in nine holes on solid ledges, and it was unbearable. You could almost not stand to be in the house. We turned TV on, the radio on, the drilling was just going on, the noise. At one point, we had four crews in there. So that is a concern because we have the same type of ledge area. We're only a half-mile down the road as it's going to be on some of the other properties. Secondly, we're concerned about implementation and final results of the plantings for the buffer zone. When the contractor storage yard went in, we had agreed to a buffer of treats. Well, I was still coming to the planning commission meetings to try to get that resolved. And finally, the traffic. We have baby strollers. We have septic tanks, trucks. We have tankers. That creates a problem, so we're worried about the safety getting in and out. Sometimes you can't get out the driveway. So we're worried about, this is going to go all the way down the road to Fairfield. That's a concern. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Susan Showalter, followed by Ben Hyzer.
Susan Showalter for Walker's Creek District. I want to take the time to thank the board for meeting with us to hear our concerns about this proposal. I've sat through three of the different meetings and listened to a lot of comments. The citizens that are for this solar proposal are not directly affected by it. They do not live near it, and they're not in this neighborhood. There have been many negative comments made that should have had some bearing on y'all's decisions. I was under the impression, as an elected official, you were to listen to the citizens and vote the way the majority wanted. It seems to me that the 10 families that are directly affected should have some vote in this. They are the ones that will have to deal with it, and and if you vote for it, I know they'll have to deal with it. We own land that joins this facility, and we're going to have to deal with it. I get the feeling after meeting with each of you that two of the board members are voting for their own personal feelings, not what the citizens want. The county won't allow property owners to have X number of junk vehicles sitting around. You can't have a sign over a certain height. You can't, everything must look good to this county. Why, how is this thing going to look good to the county? I'm all for property owner rights, but when their rights affect this many people, this is where y'all need to come in. We own land in all five districts, and if I wanted to disturb my neighbors with something this permanent, I think so, they would be a lot of concern about it. What are you going to do when the rest of this farm comes back up for solar expansion? There's no turning back on the remaining hundred-and-some acres if you approve this 30-acre site now. Vote no to this proposal tonight, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben Hyzer, followed by Bill Russell.
I want to remind everybody, please don't make any, no boos, no clapping when people speak. Thank you.
Ben Hyzer, South River District. We farm and excavate in Rockbridge County, and I've really took into consideration the tax money that this group is bringing to the table for the county, and it just, it sours me a little bit, and we're a small operator, five employees. We play, we pay close to $30,000 a year to Rockbridge County in personal property tax on the equipment and the trucks that we run in this county. Now, we, our personal property tax is a little bit higher because we're, we chose to run green machines. We've got 85% of our fleet is clean burn engines. It's something that we have decided that it was good. It was good business. It was good for the customers, good for the environment. That goes for the farm as well. Over half of the fleet at the farm is clean burn engines as well. So when we talk about the money that they're paying in and what we're paying every, every 12 months for the machines that we run to operate in this county, it seems like that is kind of upended on us. I mean, we're paying twice that amount of money in 30 years. Bringing up 30 years, look around this room. How many people in this room is going to be alive in 30 years? To take this thing in and either A, clean it up, or B, try to figure out how we're going to put this back in the farming. The property is, is blue rock from one end to the other. It's some of the hardest rock in Rockbridge County. We, we excavate rock all the time in this county, and that's one rock that we always turn a blind eye to. It's not the easiest to deal with. They, I know the Fairfield thing, everybody talks about how different that is. I, I know that they can, they completely destroyed three different drills on that site, drilling the holes to drive these posts to hold these panels. completely destroyed three different drills on that site, drilling the holes to drive these posts to hold these panels. That was only a half of it. The other half of the site, the engineers, I've heard a lot of comments about the site being engineered. The engineers, they missed two thousand yards of material on that site, cut field. The company contacted my firm about removing the two thousand yards from the site. We gave them a price. They said they were so close to being over budget for the earth that they had to move the cut field and the rocks that they had to drill, that they expected our company to haul two hundred loads of dirt for free. They were looking for an out. They ended up moving the two hundred yards of dirt on site. They just changed the elevation of half of the site to get that to work. Another thing about the panels, a panel's a panel. We haul, we haul mulch and sawdust out of Fitzgerald to Moore there in Fairfield. We were hauling mulch three weeks ago. It was ten o'clock on a Tuesday morning. It was seventy degrees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hyzer.
Bill Russell, followed by Julia Rivera, I believe.
Bill Russell, Cars Creek District, Chairman, members of Board Supervisors. I urge you to reject this application as a matter of public policy. I think that the, the comprehensive plan, the county in its, in its totality is really about maintaining community. Private property law is about community. It is basic. We take, we talk about the right to do whatever we want with our property within range. I believe that. But going back through Judeo-Christian heritage, Roman law, English common law, law of the colony of Virginia, the law of the Commonwealth of Virginia. It's clear that it has always been recognized. You can do what you want to with your property as long as you don't disturb your neighbor's right to the use and enjoyment of their property. This does. Thank you.
Julia Rivera, I believe, followed by Mitchell Davis.
Julie Rivera, Walker's Creek District. Ladies and gentlemen, intention matters.
Ma'am, would you pull that microphone to you?
Yes, I sure will. Thank you. Shall I start again?
Please.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, intention matters. Is the intention really to bless the land or to curse the land? Solar panels are false saviors. All that glistens is not gold, and bags of silver can be given in a double cross. The golden sun and the silver moon rise in the east over the proposed site of these sun panels, the solar panels. I know because I live across the street over across Route eleven from them. Words matter. Numbers matter. The hearing dates for this matter matters. A previous meeting was held on nine eleven, twenty-three years after the first big attack on American soil. Revelation nine eleven tells of Abaddon the destroyer, also called Apollo, God of the sun. A hundred and eleven days remained in the year. The definition in the Strong's Concordance Greek for number one eleven is lawless, and it's mentioned in Acts ten twenty-eight. Ten twenty-eight in reverse Greek numerology equals moon. The following meeting or hearing was on ten twenty-eight, forty-eight days after the nine eleven hearing. On four eight this year was the great North American total solar eclipse, the corona, that brought darkness over the American land. Today is Moon Day, or Monday, November twenty-five, the three hundred and thirtieth day of a leap year, three days before the three hundred and thirty-third day with thirty-three days remaining in the year, thirty-three being the day that, the age that Jesus Christ was killed. In regards to product safety, experts in the past had claimed that products named asbestos and pandemrex were safe, but people make mistakes. I ask you to reject this proposal. Choose life for the land. Do not, do not imagine mischief against a man. Bless the ground that we live near. Grace be with you all, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mitchell Davis, followed by Sandy Davis.
Thanks for your time. I'm going to have to read this. I'm Mitchell Davis, South River District. My family has a land and four homes that would be surrounded on two sides by this power plant. The negative impact on our neighborhood starts with the construction, which can last almost two years. We've got eighteen months plus, I think, a four-month extension possibility. It goes from seven AM to seven PM, six days a week. It'll be drilling through solid rock for the post, power poles, and cables. The noise, dust, and lights during construction will make living next to this intolerable. Increased traffic on Lincoln Road from workers and delivery trucks will make a dangerous road more so. Wells have been damaged from this type of construction, and they talked about that a little bit. But it's not just the loss of water, it's the loss of your home while you're getting a new supply obtained. But the more serious concern is contamination that can occur from chemicals like herbicides, chemicals used for cleaning and maintenance, heavy metals from damaged panels. This is a very serious health concern because our well is located within two hundred feet of this construction and serves two families. As y'all know, the land where they want to put this is a rock ledge. And trees won't grow. They're not, we're not going to be screened from it. Many panels will be on a hill, which we're on a hill. The panels will be on a hill. So they'd have to plant redwoods and some good dirt, and that would be dead before they screened it. Then plus, it's twelve to fifteen feet above the hill. So they're not going to be hidden. Sun Tribe offered us money to put trees on our property. But the problem with that was the money offered wouldn't do the job. And more importantly, we don't want to fill up our open spaces on our land with trees because Sun Tribe wants to put a power plant in an area that can't be screened. I don't think it should be our responsibility to screen their stuff when another one's making money off of it. This would also limit what I could say about the project too, if I'd have taken it. The economic impact on the family would be a reduction of property value, which can be substantial, up to thirty percent according to proximity. And common sense tells me if someone is looking at two homes and one is surrounded by a solar pa- power plant, they'd pick the other one every time. I have spoken to local appraisers and realtors, and all have agreed. This would also lower the value of our rental property and make it difficult to find renters who want to look at that. There's nothing wrong with Sun Tribe and Mr. Huffman making money, but when it comes at the expense of the neighbor's property rights, our livelihood and our quality of life, this should not be allowed.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Sandy Davis, followed by Steve Hart.
I'm Sandy Davis, Mitchell's wife, and I just want to say that I am very opposed to this. I am a breast cancer survivor. And everybody says that it's safe, but they also said that about plastic and Roundup and all these other chemicals that are out there. Anything can happen, and I've, I just don't want to have to live by it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs.
Steve Hart, followed by Bill O'Brien.
Steve Hart, Cars Creek. Welcome to the world of being energy utility regulators. You need to start asking questions like it. If you want to know what's going to happen to property values and tax revenues, convene the Board of Equalization. You've got a board that's supposed to do that. You can get a Rockbridge County answer to that question, not a study done by somebody else. We talk about, so the power's going to be used locally. Okay, how does this power us at night? In a thunderstorm, in a three-day blizzard? What percentage of the time does it actually generate full power? You need to ask those questions. What does it cost us to maintain the generation system that powers us when this doesn't power us? Because apparently now we've got to pay for both systems, each of which only works part-time. Talk about finances. First Solar, which is not these fine folks, but is one of the largest solar companies in the country, recently reported that sixty-six percent of their annual profit came from Infrastructure Reduction Act funds. Sixty-six percent was taxpayer dollars. It's our money. So that's what our interest here is in. What happens when that dries up? Is this stuff financially viable without that? Pollinators. Okay, we got a bunch of standards here. Who's going to enforce that ten years from now? Is the county going to have to pay for that, or are we just going to say it and just hope it's gone there for forty years? They say the life of the panels is forty years. Dominion Energy in their annual filing with the SEC says that their projected power demand is going to double in the next fifteen years. It's probably going to go up from that. If their projected power demand is going to double, why would we decommission a power plant? That question needs to be asked. They say the solar panels are good neighbor. They're not a good neighbor. They don't, they don't contribute to the economic life of the community. Yeah, they contribute to the county government. But they don't go to the vet. They don't go to the doctor. They don't shop at the grocery store. They don't join the fire department. They don't do the things that a community does. Sun Tribe also stated in the hearing before the Planning Commission that they're a developer, not an operator. That their specialty is development of these, not operating them. So who's going to operate it? They can make promises. They can get things written in. They can be fine folks with all the intentions of the world, but they'll sell it to someone else. We'll sell it to someone else because it's happened all over Virginia. Finally, two hundred and twenty square miles have been permitted for solar panels in Virginia in all of our jurisdictions. That's one point six eight times the area of Rockbridge County. If we keep giving up farms, I don't know what the rest of y'all are going to eat.
Bill O'Brien, followed by Fred Favre.
Good evening, Bill O'Brien, from South River and Buffalo districts. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you and to my Rockbridge County neighbors as a concerned citizen. As being done and considered by other county boards in Virginia, I strongly recommend that you impose a solar moratorium. This will give local planning commissions sufficient time to draft solar energy ordinances, balancing state mandated renewable energy targets with concerns over land use, environmental impact, additional costs to maintain minimal emergency services and community input. If the board truly wants to take a leadership role in this matter, you would extend the breadth of this needed moratorium to also address other renewable energy alternatives headed our way, such as wind turbines, hydroelectric plants, and small modular reactors referred to as SMRs, being developed today by New Scale Power in the Idaho National Laboratory for initial operation in twenty twenty-nine. Why is this important? Our governor has already indicated that the Commonwealth will take national leadership role when it deploys SMRs in locations in southwest Virginia. Please note today that other southwest Virginia counties are already revisiting their regulations and comprehensive plans regarding renewable energy plants amid the growing debates statewide over local versus state authority in approving these developments. If we don't get our act together soon, the state may dictate our future for us to meet its renewable energy targets outlined in the twenty twenty Virginia Clean Economy Act. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Fred Favre, followed by Phyllis Favre.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Fred Favre, and I'm, I live in Walker's Creek District. Our family has experienced with solar. Using federal tax credits, we had solar panels installed on our home more than ten years ago. Our experience with solar couldn't be better. No noise, no upkeep, no defective panels, no sign of toxicity to our plants, our cats, other animals, or people, and no surprise IRS threats about our use of tax credits.
Mister Favre, could, you're going to have to pull that mic a little closer. I don't think I can hear you in the back.
Pull the whole thing closer to you. There you go.
Thank you. The Huffman family wants to rent thirty-five acres of their hundred and sixty-six acre farm to Sun Tribe to build a solar installation. If built, this otherwise unused thirty-five acres would generate a substantial income to sustain this family farm. The county benefits by generating about three times more tax income on that thirty-five acres by upping the land use bracket. The site of the array satisfies, in my view, the master plan because it is nearly invisible from major roads, and the perimeter will be planted. The array will have no noise, no odor, no traffic, no night lights, no increased use of county resources. When built, the solar array will provide clean electricity to more than three hundred homes in our county for thirty years. And at the end of the leases, the developer, already having set funds aside of the project beginning for the purpose, will remove the installation completely. But the best news is that in thirty years, the site will be returned to a financially fortified farmer and his family as farmland. I believe this project is good for the farmer and good for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Phyllis Favre, followed by Manya McMichael.
Hi, my name is Phyllis Favre. I live in Walker's Creek District. I also support the proposed Warm Run Solar Field. The Huffman farm, like most family farms, could use the support it would get from the rental of the thirty-four acres of their hundred and sixty-six acre cow cap operation. I feel the sighting is okay with the long-range land use ideas in the master plan. I feel comfortable with the environmental oversight that would look at the installation of the solar panels. And I feel good about the idea that the builder operator would be required to recycle the panels in thirty years. I think it should be built.
Thank you.
Manya McMichael, followed by Scott Rizer.
Good evening. My name's Manya McMichael, South River District. I was hoping to be a little bit more prepared this time, but of course, life throws tricks at us, and my printer decided to throw a trick. So I'm going to go through a few things this evening. I'm going to ask some questions. I'm also going to give a couple of statements, and I would hope that if each of you up here cannot answer some of these questions that you vote no.
Ma'am, we are not taking questions. You're.
No, I'm, I'm just saying a question out loud. You don't have to answer it, but if you can't answer it within your mind, then I hope you say no. All right? So I went through a proposal that I saw that was first introduced to the county. Since all of the conditions that were proposed, I believe it was earlier this month to the Planning Zoning Commission, or maybe it was September eleventh. I have not been able to find a revised proposal, so I went off the original proposal to review this. Sun Tribe Company, few questions here. How many agricultural properties have been purchased to build a solar facility in the past thirty to forty years? You haven't been in business that long. How many of those properties purchased are still under the ownership and management of Sun Tribe? We don't know that. How many of the properties changed hands, or how many times has it changed hands in the course of that farm? If this property was approved for this solar panel, I do believe there needs to be further investigation, further research on this so that we could propose something that would benefit the county, the farmers in this community, that if this property went into a solar farm, that if it was to change hands again, that we would turn. That if this property went into a solar farm, that if it was to change hands again, that we would turn this around for a first right of refusal. To either the county themselves, a local form, a farmer co-op, or even a neighbor. We would like to benefit from that if that should happen. I'd also like to touch on a couple of other things here. They touched about the money, how much money this was going to make in this proposal. It says $460,000. If you break that down over 40 years, that's a little over $11,000. Do we need to see this facility for just $11,000 a year? I think it was Mr. Heiser here who said he pays almost over double that in his property taxes alone. Local jobs. We heard the company here talk about specialized services. Unfortunately, we're a rural area. We don't afford those specialized services. Are those going to be local jobs? I don't think so. We might benefit from the extra restaurant, the extra hotel expenses. But I don't see that we're going to be able to service them in their construction. A visual, it's a low profile. Wood poles that are 30 to 40 foot tall with transmission lines, high powered electrical lines are not low profile. I want to follow this up with saying that I am not only a concerned citizen. I'm a professional in the heavy civil engineering. I'm also a certified D E Q reviewer, plan reviewer inspector. And I do not want to see this affect our community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Scott Rizer, followed by Melanie Tennant.
Madam Chair, good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for what you do for us. I'm actually not against solar energy. I got questions about the process you're using to approve this one. Thus, I misunderstood when it came to planning commission meetings and misunderstood the chart. You still have a draft solar ordinance. The solar energy is so damned important to Rockbridge County. Why don't you pass the ordinance before you keep granting special exceptions to it? The I'm assuming that you. You followed the same process when you approved the the solar array out outside of Fairfield. What a success that's been. The. Let's learn from our mistakes.
Thank you, sir.
Melanie Tennant. Followed by Caitlin Smith.
Hello, I'm Melody Tennant. I'm from the Walkers Creek District and I am speaking in favor of this project. I believe that Warm Run Solar will facilitate Rockbridge County. Taking a very important next step towards energy independence. We live in a time not back in candles and no electricity. I believe everybody in this room uses electricity. So this will get us one step closer to energy independence.
Caitlin Smith, followed by Wendell Smith.
Caitlin Smith, Buffalo District. I strongly oppose the Warm Run Solar Farm. As a Rockbridge County native, raised in farm family. I would like to carry on my family's tradition of farming, just as those generations before me have done. However, as a young farmer, I'm already facing the struggle of finding good adequate farmland in our area. I fear that if we continue to rezone agriculture areas and make special exemptions, where will it stop? We can't make new land. What we have is what we get and we need to keep this in mind. And take care of the land we have for the generations to come. Remember, please, that my generation and those after me will still be around in 30 to 40 years. To deal with the depleted farmland and mess created by the solar farms. With this, I ask that you consider voting against the Warm Run Solar Farm and help protect farms in Rockbridge County. Thank you.
Wendell Smith, followed by Bob Bursak.
Wendell Smith, Buffalo District. Oh, I oppose this project and. My work that I do, I'm all over the county and I meet a lot of people who move in. And I. In my curiosity, I always asked them why they moved to Rockbridge County. And it's always the beauty of the place and the friendliness of the people. So. I don't think this, the ones I've talked to. Think this is a lovely thing to make the county prettier. When I ride. South into Lexington on 11, you're looking straight in on that field. And there's no way there's trees that ever be tall enough to see the block, the view of that site. And from my, where I live on the hilltops. And that's, I'm going to say three to four miles away. You're looking straight into that and there are no trees that will cover that up. So I'm strongly against this and I hope you vote against.
Thank you, sir.
Bob Bursak, followed by. Joe Borzelia, and I probably apologize if I butchered that last name.
Good evening. My name is Bob Biersak. I live in the Cars Creek District. I support this proposal for a whole variety of reasons. A lot of the objections that are raised in these meetings are serious concerns. About the character of this this community, about the extraordinary beauty that we all value so much. About the way of life that that can be preserved or challenged in the way that this this area develops. We thought, I represent Rockbridge Conservation and we've thought for the last 48 years. About the changes that come inevitably with development and and. Freeways and a whole variety of other things that change the the composition and the and the and the character of this this area. And if you do it in a thoughtful way. If you consider all the possibilities and all the the challenges that sometimes that that development can represent. You can make wise decisions and move forward in a way that's that's responsible and and responsive to all the people who live here. It doesn't mean nothing changes. Inevitably, it does. But it means you've thought it through, you've considered it carefully. And the mechanism for that here really is to develop this kind of ordinance. There are a whole variety of people from different perspectives who've come before you tonight. Who support the idea that you should create a set of coherent policy guidelines that will dictate how you choose. And to accept or reject these kinds of developments over time. I'll tell you that this particular proposal is about as good as it can be. In all of the contexts that we considered when we looked at possible ordinance language. I hope you'll consider it carefully. I hope you make policies that move forward progressively and thoughtfully. And therefore I hope you approve this particular.
Thank you, sir.
Joe Borzelia, followed by Stephen Cantor.
Good evening. I'm Joe Borzalika. I live up Walkers Creek. I have spoken to.
Yes, thank you. We can hear you as well as we'd like.
Good evening. My name is Joe Borzalika. I live up Walkers Creek. I have spoken to you before previously on this issue and returned tonight to encourage your support for the project. And as such, I will be brief. Much concern has been expressed about maintaining family farms in our county and protecting farmlands from intrusions like solar farms. The landowner in this project has gone on record even tonight, saying that the rental fees from this project. Will help support his current farm operations. For generations, it might seem. One of my neighbors who rents land to a company for for a solar farm says it's the best crop he's got acre for acre. When the lease is up, the land will once again be available for the agricultural use of his children and grandchildren. The operation is in a location recommended by the county comprehensive plan. In terms of aesthetic impact. The operation will be generally well hidden and once installed, the panels are quiet and don't emit odors. The power generated from the operation will be used locally. We're not powering Richmond with this. Overarching all is the fact that solar power is one of the cheapest methods of generating electricity currently available. And doesn't contribute to climate change by burning fossil fuels. I hope you'll consider. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stephen Cantor, followed by Skylar Zonk.
Hello, I'm Steve Cater, South River District. I'm an engineer and a physician by training. I oppose the Warm Run application for these reasons. Number one. Manmade climate change is not settled science. I'm sorry. There is significant evidence that so called greenhouse emissions have minimal effect on global climate. Number two, solar electric development results in pollution from the manufacturing and disposal of the materials used. And it does permanently alter the landscape. The land will never go back to the way it was. Number three, the development of utility scale photovoltaic installations. Is driven by federal programs and the Virginia Clean Economy Act. Which requires Dominion Energy to become carbon free by 2045. Most observers believe that that goal will not be achieved by solar and wind alone, if at all. And that's mostly due to the number of solar and wind installations that would be required. The intermittent nature of solar and wind generated electricity. And the growing demand for electricity from Dominion, which is expected to double in the next 20 years, mostly due to data centers. Even if we want to use solar power to significantly reduce our dependence on fossil fuel generated electricity. Which it won't. And even if the landowner in the county make large amounts of money from this development. Which they won't. And even if we think the process of permitting use by special exception is the best way to make these decisions. Seriously, 20 conditions on this application? It's crazy. It is simply not worth the cost of neighboring property value loss. The destruction of our view sheds and environment. And the losses of open space, farmland and agricultural productivity. And I remind you that agriculture is still the county's main industry. So I think about what happened when they shut down the schools during the COVID pandemic. Many supposed experts thought that was the right way to go. And now we know that there was long term damage done to the educational, social and emotional growth of our young people. With little impact on the pandemic. So I believe that in the coming decades, we'll look back on our decisions surrounding solar power generation. And see that a similar debacle has been perpetrated. Thanks for your time. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir.
Skylar Zonk, followed by John Campbell.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Skylar Zunk. I'm here on behalf of Energy Right, a Virginia based and Virginia focused clean energy education nonprofit. Aiming to bring a conservative voice to clean energy conversations happening all across the Commonwealth. And to bring common sense into this scenario with in pursuit of clean energy pursued the right way. Before I get to Warm Run, I want to commend the county, the planning commission and the solar committee on its work on the draft solar policy. It's great to see the solar committee adopt common sense measures, setbacks, buffering, strong decommissioning language for all projects to abide by moving forward. The ordinance policy signals what the county wants to see and does not want to see in these projects coming forward. And with this, Rockbridge County will join the vast majority of other Virginia counties that have put forward ordinances and policies to govern these projects. Change is difficult. Whatever we do, whatever we develop in almost every single land use decision. This ordinance and I'd argue that this individual project is about managed change, pursuing. Change with the least impact possible for the benefit of the most folks in the county long run or in the long run. In terms of Warm Run, this is a very small project with generous setbacks and buffers, very small compared to most other that we see all across the Commonwealth. The way Virginia powers our home and homes and businesses is changing. We need more energy. We need clean energy and we need that energy delivered to our homes and businesses the most cost effective way possible. Solar energy is the cheapest way to add a new electron to the grid. This will not be the last solar facility that you're asked to vote upon because the the free market wants to see more of this affordable energy coming to power our homes and businesses. I have a neighbor back home that's a solar project 10 times this size. And I went through the same scenario with my neighbors, my family. Would we rather see a couple hundred homes developed on this property? Or would you rather? Would we rather see a permanent, or excuse me, a non permanent, long term land use neighbor? That develops clean energy, is absolutely quiet, does not draw on county services, does not increase traffic in the long run and adds to the county's bottom line. I'll close with property rights. Property rights are incredibly important and I wish that they were more of a topic during this public hearing. George Washington once said that freedom and property rights are inseparable. You cannot have one without the other. You heard from the property owner this evening earlier. He's got several options on what he can do with his property. He wants to keep the land in his family, preserve agriculture uses on the rest of the 160 acre parcel. Use only 20% of it for a clean energy project. I'd argue this is a slam dunk. This is a common sense, small energy energy project to help power Rockbridge County. Thank you.
Mr. Zonk. Mr. Zonk. Your district, your magisterial district, I don't believe you live in.
Not a resident, no ma'am. You're representing a nonprofit.
Thank you. Um, that is enough.
John Campbell, followed by Caitlin Snowden, I believe.
John Campbell, South River District, Chairman of the Air Sports Supervisors. Thank you. Unlike everybody else tonight, I'm not here to ask you to approve or disapprove this project or try to sway your opinion on. Solar, whether you like it or not. I'm just here to give you my experience on these type sites throughout the state. I have a company that manages over 700 acres. Do we do vegetation managing on approximately 700 acres of other solar farms throughout the state? Our. Our main employees are sheep. So there is certainly a way to keep. This property in farmland agriculture use. And it works well. So these sites can not only produce power, but they can also remain in agriculture. My time doing this, I've seen some really well planned, developed sites. And I've seen some poorly planned and developed sites, which you certainly hear about in the news. I can tell you that the poorly planned and developed sites are the older sites. The. Most of the people in Chris's position have gotten a lot of experience now and gotten a lot tighter. Counties are going to solar committees, which I was on for Rockbridge to develop that. And. And they they tend to work sort of that. So a well planned and developed solar site can remain in agriculture and can be a good neighbor for the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caitlin Snowden. Followed by Ted Carl Green.
Hi, my name's Caitlin Snowden. I am in the South River District. I also live on the Davis property. I'm one of the tenants that's probably the closest to the property line of this project. I have a couple of concerns and complaints. One of my concerns is I just had a baby a couple of months ago and now I have to risk her growing up. Playing outside with the construction, the debris, all the noise and everything that comes with building this project. And the well that keeps getting mentioned, I'm one of those families that would be affected if. This well gets damaged or contaminated. And that's one of my concerns that I have is if something does happen to this well. How long does, you know, my child have to go without a proper bath or my family for that matter? And then one of my complaints that I have is actually something that I kept seeing pop up tonight in their PowerPoint was to be a good neighbor. The past couple of weeks, I have been able to look out my window and. See a group of men walking around in my yard, walking around in my driveway. Thankfully talking to the Davis family, but. They are the ones that we've been getting, you know, all this information from. If this project is such a good neighbor like they've stated, no one's came to knock on our door. Give us information about anything that's happening. We've had to go to other sources to find out things that are happening. So. If they were such a good neighbor, I wish they would talk to all the neighbors that are going to get affected by this project.
My name's Ted Chalgren. I live in suburban Busselburg. Five years ago, my wife and I were driving down from Cornell University where we. Five years ago, my wife and I were driving down from Cornell University where we were visiting our son. We came down 81, wanted to get off of 81, as you can understand, and got on 11. Went to this town called Staunton. Ate lunch there, and in Stanton, when we left, we somehow ended up on Highway 252. That's the Brownsburg Turnpike. As we drove south toward Lexington, we were going to Columbia, South Carolina, our home. The experience we had of the beauty of Rockbridge County just overwhelmed us. Every curve was a new postcode. We could see the meadows. We saw the streams. We saw the farms. We saw the agriculture, the mountains. And honestly, we didn't know where we were. A lady passed us as we were driving south. Obviously, we'd been driving her insane, and there's one straightaway left near Swope Road, and she passed us. And so we were behind her. Well, not long thereafter, she turned right into her driveway. As we slowed down, I just happened to look over, and I saw a Fossele Biuna. And I asked my wife, Jana, I said, you want to go look at that? And she's a sport. And so we turned around, probably in Larry and Beddardale Britton's driveway, who are now dear friends of ours. And went back, and we went up this driveway to the west. You couldn't see the house from the turnpike. And when we crested the knoll, we both sort of lost our breath. Like that, we were looking at Little House Mountain, Big House Mountain, Forge Mountain, Hogback Mountain, and Jump Mountain. It was over. We were going to South Carolina. We bought that, we were here in less than 90 days. We bought that house five years ago last month. We love this county. We thank the Lord every day that we live in this county. We enjoy the beauty of this county. And I would just hate to see this beautiful bucolic pastoral county adulterated again like it has been out there in Fairfield. Please vote no on this. Thank you very much.
That is everyone signed up to speak?
See if we have anybody online.
Nobody, unless you want to raise your hand online, now's your chance. No hands raised?
If not, is there anybody? Yes, hold on, we'll. Lee?
Lee Merrill, Walker's Creek, previously South River, previously Cars Creek. I just encourage you to discern between the real concerns you've heard tonight and the ones that are less viable. This will rest this land for 30 years. I'd be thrilled to see it in active agriculture. I think it will be because I think there's another way for it to be productive in that regard. It meets the needs of the property owner. It meets the needs of the community in terms of the agricultural transition land. I can't think of a better way to park that land for 30 years where it will impact Lincoln Road and other areas and visibility on other land uses. This land use does not seriously impact that property and will replenish what is a pretty beat-up piece of ground in terms of the soils through a beneficial thing, that you're going to get revenue out of it. It's a win-win. I've heard all the concerns here tonight, and I just cannot comprehend that they, on balance, hold a light to any problem that remains with this project. This has been thoroughly vetted. There may be something else that somebody can cook up that will ameliorate some other minor concern. I don't know what that concern is. I haven't heard anything creative approach to make it even more beneficial to the community. But I don't, for one citizen of this county, understand any hesitation on the part of the supervisors to endorse it. And that's just my two cents. I do meet with the Rockbridge Conservation Land Use Planning Committee. This is something that we have been looking at for the downzoning in this county that was accomplished 20 years ago is a great asset to this community in terms of how it's developed. This kind of well-sighted, well-controlled project will cause no harm beyond disturbances during the construction period, which I think are being managed and mitigated to a reasonable degree. So I would encourage you each to consider your opportunity to endorse the project and proceed to approve it tonight. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Cynthia Cater, South River. I want to urge you to deny the Warm Run special exception permit, particularly because it is not in line with a comprehensive plan that talks about how we're to promote the agricultural beauty of our county, Rockbridge County. And as we all know, the ones that, the solar industrial complexes that have been placed aren't really agricultural farms. The other thing I'm concerned about is the elephant in the room that nobody's really talking about is PFAS. The panels are made of permanent chemicals that cannot be recycled or destroyed under any circumstances. We don't have the technology yet, and they're not working on it because it takes so much energy to actually smelt them. And so nobody's talking about that. But if you go to the county extension office meetings, they recommend that we test our lands, our farms, our creeks, our streams for PFAS. But yet we come in here, and it's like the Board of Supervisors, y'all, want us to dump PFAS into our lands. PFAS is don't just disappear. They're permanent chemicals in the land. They get in our corn. They get in our land. They get in our cattle. They're in our food source. They become what happens to our children, what happens to cancers. They know they cause cancers. Nobody's talking about it. But even if you don't want to talk about it, you know that PFASs are going to go downstream into the Chesapeake waterways and destroy that. And what are we going to do then? So please, I urge you to deny the Warm Run special exception permit because of PFASs.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name is Alan Stout, South River, 136 Warm Run Road. I'm compelled to comment about the Planning Commission's claim that this application for a zoning special exemption is, quote, substantially, which is incredibly subjective. To be in compliance with the county's comprehensive plan is grossly inaccurate. It violates the very heart of the plan's purpose, to protect the health, safety, and the welfare of the citizens of Rockbridge County. This application clearly and miserably fails to do so. As clearly disclosed in the document emailed that you each received from the Warm Run Citizens Association last Thursday, November 21st. According to the Virginia Land Use Law Handbook used by the county, this condition qualifies as one of five conditions, any one of which being present would support the denial of a special exemption. However, we have all five of the justifiable conditions stipulated in the handbook for denial with this application overwhelmingly supporting its denial. By the citizens of your districts, you've been given legislative power to protect or harmfully impact the 10 families adjacent to and neighboring the proposed application site. Your denial of this application will bless not only the 10 families, but many others living in the county and bring honor to the positions that you've been granted. By your denial, you will be fully fulfilling the highest responsibility of your office to protect the health, safety, and the welfare of the people living in the county. This week, we are reminded of how much we have to be thankful for. I hope you will make us thankful that we have a Board of Supervisors that truly desires to protect and bless the people they serve, but never, never at the cost of harming a single family. Let me say this as clearly as possible. By saying no to this application, you are declaring to all of us, we are here for you. Your health, safety, and welfare are our highest priority. And for this, we truly say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sten. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Showalter. Thank you, guys, for all that you do. I live in the Walker's Creek District, and my brother and I own the farm just north of this property. And we also rent the Huffman farm. It's no secret here. You guys all know I have a love for farming. It's all I've ever known. It's all my family's ever done. It's born and bred in me, and I'm going to fight for it to the day I die to save every acre of land I can. I don't think any of y'all are going to sit up there and eat a solar panel. You know, I mean, a steak or a solar panel. I mean, that's pretty much the bottom line here. I'm not against solar panels. If you want to put them on the roof of your house, that's perfectly fine. There's nothing wrong with that, but you're not taking up productive farmland. God has only given us what we have, and he's not making any more farmland for us. We only have what we have, and we have to take care of it. These guys can get up here and paint you guys a pretty picture. Not one of them has called me as the renter of the land to work out a deal as far as how we're going to manage this. They're busting straight through the middle of the farm. It's not going to work to have cattle on the remainder of the farm. I mean, there's too much liability on me. All my cows will be over in Walmart parking lot. And, you know, if they came in off a Lincoln Road and fenced the property that they're going to affect all first, that would be one thing. But no, they're busting right through the middle of property, and nobody has spoke to me at all. They have my phone number. Mr. Huffman has my phone number. I haven't heard a word. Thank you. I hope you guys vote no.
There was somebody else? Yes, sir. Just one second, sir.
Luke Grant, South River District. I'm 26 years old. I was born and raised in Rockbridge County. I choose to stay in Rockbridge County. I choose to work in Rockbridge County. I choose to farm in Rockbridge County. It's been a lot of downs and a lot of ups, a lot more downs and ups. But it's always been worth it. And if I ever get where I'm going, and I get to leave something to my kids, and then I have a grandkid or a great-grandkid, and if he's going to do something like that, I hope I'm turning over in my grave. Because it's just, I think it's disrespectful to the people who worked so hard to get something established for their family, then they can do something to destroy it, in my opinion, and take it away from somebody who would want to farm it. If you don't want to farm it, you should try to help somebody else who does want to farm. Then another concern I have with it being hunting season and everything, you know, Rockbridge County is a pretty sportsman area. What happens if somebody shoots one of these while deer hunting? Who's liable for that? I mean, does that destroy the solar panel? I have no idea. So that might be a concern worth asking. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Mark Johnson, 196 Warm Run Road. Say that three times. These are not good neighbors. Nobody's called to me. Nobody's called me. I'm available. I've got multiple science degrees. There's a lot of misstatements. It'd take me all night to go through them. I will not. Miss quote on NC State study, I'm a graduate. There is so much going on here that I don't think you're getting a full picture. If nothing else, I would ask you all to just pause for a little while and really look into this because I don't believe half of this stuff. And the next thing is, if you're not a good neighbor, and I've got to compliment the 911 system in this county. It's excellent because I take an ambulance ride at least every couple of months. And I'm real curious how that's going to affect that with the original construction going in. I don't think a lot of plans were made for any usage on the roads. I'm curious what the Department of Transportation has to say about all this as well. And I really hope you came in here with an open mind and give it some thought. I appreciate it, and I'll abide by any decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? No one else? Oh, there you are. Sorry.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Edward Showalter. I graduated from the University of Georgia with a degree in veterinary medicine. I'm originally from Rockbridge County, and back to Rockbridge County, practicing in Rockbridge County. My father was a veterinarian. He practiced in Rockbridge County as well. Want to also speak to Warm Run Road itself. I feel like I've sort of adopted that road because VDOT may come on it three times a year, possibly four. I grade the road with my own equipment. I push snow with my own equipment. And of course, don't get any thank you notes from VDOT. But anyway, I do it to help the neighbors that are there. And I also do it because my son, who is now age 39, had a liver transplant when he was 31. He, in his much, much younger years, were actually, took him to, he was taken to the pediatric gastroenterologist. And they finally came up with a diagnosis of ulcerative colitis. And it was not until a liver biopsy was done was he diagnosed with sclerosing cholangitis. Sclerosing cholangitis, in the simplest terms, means that the liver is turning into scar tissue. And the colitis refers to the bile duct system and the liver. Should my son require an ambulance per se, to be taken to a hospital, UVA, and especially if it's still in the construction phase of this, when Warm Run Road is very crowded, I feel like that would slow down the process of. I feel like that would slow down the process of an ambulance getting to there. I can't remember if I said that I live at the end of Warm Run Road.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I have two 1-acre farm there.
Oh, excuse me. Was the wrong button. Yes, sir. We did. Your time is up. Would you like to wrap that, wrap it up?
Address Warm Run Road itself. It is a quarter of mile long, all dirt road. Portions of it have very deep ditches on either side, and it is very narrow in some places.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time before I close the public hearing?
We now have one hand raised online. Chris, if you could unmute online?
I did.
Okay. We can hear you.
Okay. My name is Chris Lego, and I live in the Walkers Creek District. And I would just like to remind everyone at that meeting and others listening that it's not the job of the Board of Supervisors to do what the majority of people would like to see done about situations like this. It's your painful and difficult job, which I'm sure you're aware of, to do what's the best and most forward-thinking thing for not only the county, but possibly the country. You guys are really on the spot here, and it's just not fair for people to say that they think they should be able to vote or something like that about what you guys have to do. So I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, I will close the public hearing. I would like to ask a few questions that I would like the applicant to address, especially, I would like to talk the ambulance. I had heard several people worried about the traffic, and I think that that is a worthy topic to address, how that, if you don't mind, if that's all right, gentlemen, can
Thank you. Excuse me. So, yeah, appreciate all of the comments, obviously, both opponents of the project and also supporters of the project. We've heard a lot of them throughout this process with the county, both with the Planning Commission and Board, and it really allows, you know, helps me level up and be a better developer. So always appreciate that. Specific to safety, but also specific to the traffic concerns. That was something that was brought up pretty early in the process, was concerns about traffic on Warm Run Road and what that might look like in terms of ingress and egress for residents and kind of their free flow to and from their home. Because of that, we proactively submitted a traffic memo from a third-party consultant that had done a traffic study on the project for us, Dewberry. And so that was submitted with our application, and it addressed a number of different things, including the entrance to the project parcel across that 80-acre A1 parcel to the north of the project. It also addressed a number of different options at mitigating impacts to traffic. So at the, it was a little, it's a little premature, because the Construction Traffic Management Plan, which is a proposed condition on the project, is solidified during the site plan approval. And that kind of speaks to delivery times, staggering delivery times. The traffic memo also talks to the fact that there is ample room on the project parcel for staging of the deliveries. So none of that would be backing up on Warm Run Road. And additionally, the opportunity for there to be a flagger at Lincoln Road, or where Lincoln Road and Warm Run Road intersect, I think that the, if I perceive that the fear is that, that there's gonna be a lot of deliveries that stack up and just kind of clog up the road. And I would just like to bring it back to, this is not an exotic process. This is something that construction projects do all across the county and all across the Commonwealth on roads, larger and smaller than Warm Run Road. It's a known quantity that VDOT and construction crews mitigate on a daily basis. And so while I understand the concern, I believe that there are ample opportunities for it to be mitigated.
So VDOT is approved?
So we sent preliminary site entrance to VDOT, and they looked at it, and they preliminarily approved that the site distance was in accordance with what they were looking for, for a low-volume construction entrance.
Site distance, um, site distance on Warm Springs?
On Warm Run Road, yes, sir.
Yeah. Did they take in consideration Lincoln Road? And, I mean, I don't live out there, but I've been out there three times, and that's a tough turn just to get off Lincoln Road. Did they take in, I mean, I'd be more concerned as a resident not to back up on Warm Spring, although I don't think you could pass two vehicles, but having a truck get hung up and block the whole intersection there, yeah. I mean, I think that's the problem.
And are you referring to if you're coming from Route 11 south, south on Lincoln or north on Lincoln?
Well, either way, but I would think most of would have to, would be coming south on Lincoln. That's a tough turn.
And so that's something that, that will be addressed during the Construction Traffic Management Plan as, as everything is solidified, and that's, that's during site plan approval. That being said, it would be my understanding that if traffic was coming from the north, so coming south on Lincoln, that, that could possibly be, that could be handled with a smaller flatbed, but most other traffic would have to come north on Lincoln, because that turn is relatively tight. You're correct on that.
Yeah, but there's already, at least in my four or five times out there, there's a lot of traffic on Lincoln Road, pretty much different times a day, and that's a concern, but I don't, I'm not a VDOT expert, so.
How many?
I'll leave that up to them.
How many deliveries are we talking about?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a, that's a great, great question. So for 15 trucks for, we're kind of gravel and the site entrance, and then maybe, so if you add it all up, probably 45 trucks in total across the entire construction process. And that, that's not always, you know, that's not always large trucks that, you know, would span the, you know, from larger trucks to smaller flatbeds. And, you know, you have to remember, it's, that's over the, you know, five to eight, 10-month construction period.
So is there anything in the plans to expand Warm Spring Road a little bit? Make it a little wider, or make the entrance into the property a little wider?
Because the construct, the can, excuse me, the traffic memo that was submitted to the county by us, and it was drafted by Dewberry, talks about improvements to the site access for the projects. Yes.
But no chance of relocating that site access, because where you have it now, it goes right through the middle, and, and like we heard earlier, I think if we, I shouldn't say we, but if Mr. Huffman had had better conversations with the Show Walters, they could have saved more farmland, you know? If they just used a little bit of fencing and some cattle guards where they could keep their cattle on the majority of the property, not all of it. I mean, I think they're willing to be good neighbors too, but it's gotta work both ways.
I appreciate you bringing that up. So it's my understanding that Mr. Huffman has been speaking with the Show Walters throughout this process, that he recently, I actually, you know, it sounds like he met with them and potentially extended the, or tried to extend the lease on, on the property. That's, we, I was kind of leaving that up to him as the landowner.
But you can't extend the lease if you can't protect your cow.
We've, we've brought that up with Mr. Huffman, and Mr. Huffman, you know, agreed with us that he thought during the construction and even after construction, that, you know, it, the, you know, temporary and permanent fencing could, could be put up around the project and will be put up around the project to allow the residual 130 acres to remain in agriculture, and that's why we've continued to state that throughout this process.
Can I just confirm? Did you just say that there would only be 45 trucks over eight months to build 30 acres of solar panels?
Yes, sir. And so previously during my presentation, I spoke about a three-megawatt project that John was actually just on site last week, and that's where that estimate of five months for a three-megawatt project came, and two to three to four weeks for pre-drilling, depending on site condition. And, and so those estimates, 45 trucks, came directly from us speaking with our sister company who constructs these projects. So sat down with them, and they provided those numbers, so I'm pretty confident in those.
About another construction site? Is it similar or the same as this construction site?
It's, it's the same size, so they had, they were relatively confident in those assumptions.
So it was a three?
It was a three-megawatt.
Three-megawatt, as this one.
So has the contract been signed with Dominion? Are they on board? Y'all, I think last time we talked, it...
The contract for interconnecting into the, that's in the final stages of the, of the study process.
Okay, and...
That's correct.
We talked, I just want to, so if this were to be approved, the next step would be construction after. Who constructs the facility? Is it your sister company? Or does it go out to bid? Or, and then who supervises the construction? Are you, as developers, are you with it from here until it's completed? Or are you with it from here until you get permits, and then it goes to a constructing company, or it goes to Dominion? And Dominion could hire, construct? How does it work? What's the process?
So our, our role as developers is to develop the project. This project will be sold to a long-term owner-operator, so that's a Fortune 500, Fortune 200 company that specializes.
And that's after it's finished?
And that would be after, after development. So after any type of local use approval and in between that, that time and construction. And so that long-term owner-operator would then potentially, you know, I can't speak for them, but I would assume that they might go out for a request for proposal where a construction company, or they could construct it in-house, but that's how that process works. Our sister company responds to those RFPs and, yeah, constructs projects. And as, as I've said in previous presentations, I can't recall if I said it in this one, Dominion is the most natural long-term owner-operator of projects like this.
And so we talked about decommissioning and having funds available, but y'all have never decommissioned the solar facility, because once you get done with the development phase, you're, so who's responsible for the decommissioning? Is it the ultimately, is it final owner?
So the, the bond or the payment upfront to the county is provided by, by the project, project owner. Our, I keep on talking about our sister company. We do have a sister company that constructs these projects. We have a sister company that, that, you know, does operations and maintenance on these projects, and they have, I don't believe that they've, they've responded to an RFP and are in the process of that, getting ready to decommission a project.
Right. But who's, the county has the bond.
Yes, sir.
So, so we have the money to pay the bill. Does that mean we have to go out and find someone for the decommissioning? Who's, who's responsible for hiring someone when it comes time to decommission? Is it the owner, or?
The, the decommissioning bond is for the worst-case scenario where the county would be, you know, left with the responsibility. That's not what the, you know, likelihood is. It's the, the project owner would be the one that would decommission.
Right. The owner. Chris, you want to verify the, the decommissioning is the project owners?
The project owner. So, so the, the condition, as it, as it was recommended by the Planning Commission, says acceptance of a decommissioning agreement, which I can, I can give you an example of that, a previous decommissioning agreement that was accepted by the county incorporating the decommissioning plan dated December 9th, excuse me, December 8th, 2023. That plan is, of course, in your package, as well as the Planning Commission previous package. So, so it ultimately would be the, the project owner slash developer that would be responsible for the removal of the, the decommissioning. And also, they are the ones required to produce the financial surety to the county.
So you're saying the developer and the owner would be responsible?
The developer, the developer, project owner, one in the same. It could be one in the same, depending on if it was transferred since the time of...
These guys are developers, right?
Yes.
Okay, and so...
Well, in fact, they're probably the applicant, and then the developer could be Dominion, it could be the, would y'all actively construct the project? It's my understanding that y'all would not actively construct the project, being Sun Tribe. Yeah.
So we don't know who the developer is.
That's absolutely true, yes. And that has certainly been brought up throughout the process. And, and one thing that, that we consistently stated is, obviously, you want your condition to be set forth, not only for, for the bird-in-hand Sun Tribe, if you will, but any and all other project developers and owners moving forward.
Just trying to, I won't be around in 40 years either, but I'm, I want someone to know who's gonna do it.
But by statute, and by statute, it's the owner of the property, it's the owner or less, the developer, so it's whoever owns the project at the time. When decommission takes place, they have a financial obligation to decommission and to handle it. If they don't, the purpose of the bond would be if they failed to do so, they went bankrupt or for some reason refused to do so. The statute allows us access to the property, and it allows us to, then, then we would be responsible to spend the money to get somebody to decommission it.
And, and maybe, maybe it would be helpful to just, just talk about, like, why this project is, is Warm Run Solar LLC, and that's, that's because all of the due diligence, so cultural T and E, you know, wetland delineation, all of the due diligence moving up until this point was attached to that. And so, you know, that's also what the special exception permit was applied under. And so to that end, decommission, decommissioning agreement, decommissioning plan and cost estimate. So what that allows is, you know, all of the restrictions, all of the due diligence for this project carries with that LLC. And so that, that is how most development happens, and that is a very, like, kind of neat little package that then goes to the long-term owner-operator for them to, you know, have access to all of those things.
And it's probably LLC, because offers more protection from something were to go
How many of these projects have you handled, or we're saying?
You personally?
Yes.
Um, three.
Okay. And the only thing I know about electric is, it can be shocking. And I don't understand, I just can't fathom this. How can you guarantee that the energy produced at this site will stay in Rockbridge County?
That, that's a great question, and when, when folks, when folks started saying that, you know, they were worried about this going to Northern Virginia Cities, up 81, going to their data centers, I looked into just that, and the, the third study in Dominion's interconnection process talks about, it shows the load on a specific circuit. And so this project is interconnecting to the substation behind Chick-fil-A and Dunkin' Donuts. And on this specific circuit that Warm Run is interconnecting onto, the load or the use on that circuit already exceeds what is, can be produced by, by the facility. So that shows... what is can be produced by, by the facility. So that shows that it will be consumed hyper locally, even on the same circuit. Um, and, and our estimates show that it will, it will produce enough energy to, to power over 600 homes.
It is 600. I'd heard people 300 and I thought it was 600.
It is, it is 600.
Uh, can we talk about the landscaping for just a minute?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you know, it, it, it all looks good. What, what the plan is for landscaping. I know there's a bond for 36 months. Um, again, I'm not a farmer. But it wasn't, wasn't a lot growing out there. I guess enough for the cows, uh, but as far as trees and plants and so who's going to take care of, I guess, is somebody going to be hired? I, I heard the gentleman talk. They go all over the state to maintain this, all this, all these plantings that are quite extensive to make sure they're growing. Uh, and if they're not growing, let's say, because we've had this at other facilities, we've had problems. If it's not grown substantially after 36 months, can, does that bond get extended or it's just say, okay, well, we tried for 36 months. How's that gonna work?
I can address that. The, the current, uh, current recommended condition states that, uh, uh, the, the, the surety for landscaping may be held in force, in, in force for a period of no longer than 36 months from the date of the planting materials, provided, uh, that landscape materials have been specified, planting and remain in healthy condition.
All right. So.
Maintained in healthy condition.
What happens if they're, if they're not? I mean, we fought with a company out of, I think Tennessee to get grass to grow on a cellar to landfill for years. Does, is that gonna extend?
I'm uncertain if that was bonded or not, but in this case, if the landscaping is not, uh, provided that landscaping materials are, are in healthy condition.
Right.
Maintained in healthy condition. So they would not get their bond back would be one motivation.
Right. So are they gonna, does that mean they can replant or can we use the bond to replant or?
You, you, either option would be, would be acceptable. Yes.
How much is the bond?
Uh, it is a, uh, appropriate surety in the amount of a certified estimate and cost of landscape improvements, including insulation.
Okay.
So we would get a certified estimate from a landscape architect.
And, and my, my, my understanding is that the, the project is committing to the landscape buffering that's in the conceptual site plan and in the landscape buffering plan. So it's my understanding that if the project is not in conformance with that, then it's in violation of its SEP that could then be revoked by the county.
Absolutely. Yes. That's correct.
So there's, there's ample, um, motivation for, you know, the project owner to maintain its investment by making sure that the landscape buffering is adequate.
So does that mean we can delay connection if, if the landscaping isn't done and grown?
Uh, no, not per current draft ordinance. No, sir.
So we, we can just shut it down after it's all been built, but they don't have the landscape.
You, you have the ability to revoke a special exception permit. Yes, sir.
And then does decommissioning take place?
Yes.
I have a couple, sort of an off the wall question here. You, you may want, not want to answer it. That's fine. I, I appreciate the fact that you show up and you, and you kind of take the punches from, from the community because this is not an easy topic for any community. You're the developer, you're getting all the permits, you're getting the zoning and everything like that, but you're not going to construct it. You're not going to, how, how do you get paid? Where, where are you getting paid in this?
Having.
Um, I, I want to remind you all that I, that we all expect respect. And I would appreciate it. And if you can't, there, there are places outside this room that you can sit until we make our decision.
You can take it. Yeah.
Is that, is this okay? I'm the CEO. Okay. Uh, good evening and, uh, thank you for the question and.
I'm sorry, your name?
Day, I'm, excuse me, I'm Danny Van Cleef, uh, and the CEO of Sun Tribe Development, um, entering my 17th year in the solar industry. I've worked on 80 completed projects in Virginia and 22 states, worked for the Department of Defense, worked for Dominion Energy. Uh, this is my career. This is, uh, my team. Um, and we appreciate the rigor of this process because land use is complicated and it is emotional. And we are talking about a way of life here. We fully respect that. We're Virginians working in Virginia right now. The question was about how do we make money? It's a good question. We get paid a commission during permanent financing. So the development community, just like regular real estate development, solar development has, uh, a few, uh, what we call seats in the value chain that folks occupy. Development, construction, financing and operation. Sometimes companies are vertically integrated and they do all three. Oftentimes, uh, it's one company that handles development until the start of construction. Then a long-term owner operator takes over the transfer of the LLC, uh, and they fund construction and operations. That's very typical. Uh, it's typical in the energy industry. It's typical in traditional real estate development. As Tyler was addressing, that is the entire purpose of setting up a project LLC to be counterparty to all these obligations. It is so that when our job is done and we can potentially transfer ownership of the project LLC to its forever home. Every agreement that the, that we have made during that process to Rockbridge County, to the landowner, to the neighbors, to Dominion who we're interconnecting with, uh, they all transfer automatically. So every condition that would potentially be imposed on this project would transfer at the sale of the LLC. So I recognize the optics look strange sometimes when you see Warm Run Solar LLC. It looks like a shell company. It looks like we're potentially doing something that's shady. It's actually the opposite of that. It is the, a customary way to ensure that every contract and every approval and every condition with that approval that any solar project ever becomes party to transfers automatically. And the transfer of these solar, uh, solar project companies is typical. That is not something that, uh, we, um, would say is otherwise. Uh, it is how for permanent financing in the energy sector gets done. So, um, I, I recognize that it can look a little unorthodox and can sound a little unorthodox, but I, you know, as, as mentioned, I've been doing this a really long time. This is a highly customary way to establish a project for its eventual construction and operation. I'll, I'll maybe finish this kind of train of thought here with, with the final point, which is part of our job is to pick adequate, high-quality, long-term partners. Our reputation travels with these projects. We're not going anywhere. And as a company, our ability to be successful compels us to ensure that we do have positive community outcomes, that we have what I call a high do-say ratio. If we say we're going to do something, we need to get it done. Um, and part of the way in which we ensure that happens is by working with qualified, high caliber, long-term owner operators. As mentioned, we have sold numerous projects to Dominion Energy across the life of our business. We have also sold projects to other, as mentioned, large Fortune 500 energy holding companies who specialize in this work. They, those are the businesses that you want owning a project like this. Those are the businesses that you want overseeing not just the construction, but a 30 to 40-year operating life because that's their core business. And most of the companies that we have sold projects to, they own nuclear, they own solar, they own other fossil fuel generating plants, and they are in the business of owning and operating a diversified energy mix. Solar is a small part for the most part, um, but what they have is the core skills to own and operate power plants. And so owning and operating a fleet of distributed solar facilities, uh, is, is their core business. So I recognize that I provided a really long-winded answer there, but it, I think that, um, where the questions went on the structure of our business plan and the nature of the obligation for making tonight sort of demanded a, a longer answer. And if there are other questions in sort of in this category, any other, I'd be happy to take them.
Well, just, just in full disclosure, I've done some calling around the state and I've gotten very favorable reviews of your company. You know, my concern is when it's not your company, but so, uh, that's why some of the questions. Uh, I guess my last question would be, do you have to, did you have to have a six-day work week during construction? I mean, it's bad enough people are being inconvenienced, but those that are young enough to still be working ought to be able to have a couple of days peace and quiet on the weekend. I, I, I'm just throwing that out because, you know, when you talk about, you know, you can't even have a cookout in your yard if you drive, i- if you're in one of the surrounding properties during that construction time, if they're hammering and banging and and, and some people, their only time off is Saturday and Sunday. It'd be nice if they could get a little relief for a couple of days, not just Sunday.
That's just a statement.
I, I, I think that's a, I think that's a good comment. And, but before you answer that question, can you review for us? Again, it's hard for people. We, they, they see that this project is a three-year window or whatever we have, and then they don't. It, it's hard to keep up with the process. This wouldn't, if this were to be approved, it would not start, construction would not happen probably right away. Describe that.
Thanks, Danny. So, yeah, um, with the, the proposed condition is specific to, um, and I'm, I'm pulling it up right here.
You, you had said that the, the most impactful, which it took between three and it, it, the project you've just done, that it, it took three weeks, you allowed for, I, that's how, how inconvenient, describe to us the inconvenience and what will the neighbors could expect, I guess is what it.
So yeah, just, just like the project that we were, that we were talking about, um, that sister company is constructing, the, the, the pre-drilling or, or pile installation on this project would take between two, two to four weeks. And one thing to note about pre-drilling is that it's actually, so in normal soil conditions, the, these piles would be driven. Um, and, and that driving of that pile is generally over a hundred decibels and pre-drilling is, is under that threshold. So it's actually quieter to pre-drill. That would be the most impactful part of the construction process and it would be two, two to four weeks. Everything else would be, you know, insulated, insulation of those piles, insulation of racking and the panels on top of it. And the entire process would take, as I said, it, it's estimated at, at five months, but eight to 10 with stormwater closeout, facility testing, um, and, and ground cover stabilization. And so.
So to Mr., I'm sorry to interrupt you, but to Mr. Lyons's point, if the most impactful is four weeks, if we take one of those days out, you probably bring a crew in for that, right? A crew comes in to do that drilling part, I'm assuming. And then, and there are the pre-drilling. And then if we, if you were limited to five days, it would just mean that that would take longer. It is that.
That was the answer to that question, which is if it's limited to five days, that just extends the construction timeline of the project.
Just because I'm curious. Are you going to do any test drill, drilling? I mean, we've heard from someone that how hard the rock is. I, I, I believe him because I've done some.
Yeah.
So that's the work. I know he's an honest person. I don't, we go through all this and then you find you, you, you can't do what you really want to do.
Un-understood. And I'm going to let, uh, Trevor, he's our VP of Engineering, take that one.
Evening. Uh, nice to see y'all again. Trevor Francis. Um, so maybe just to, to touch on a couple of things I heard here around construction about when it might start, what the process looks like. So, you know, if we're approved on this, there's still some studies that we have to do on the project. One of the primary ones is a geotechnical drilling study. And so they're going to go out there with a drill rig and they're going to take core samples to really understand what that looks like. They're also going to do a foundation test. So typically, you know, a, a normal site, they're going to go out with pile driver, drive it in. They're going to do a push-pull test and actually try and pull it out and just kind of verify the design loads on it. Now, one of the, may, maybe the nice thing about this site is it's kind of, kind of, uh, can see what it's giving you. You go there, it's very clear. There's significant rock at the surface. There's nothing hiding there. We know going there that it is going to need, um, significant pre-drilling, probably for the full site. And so, you know, where entities can sometimes get into trouble is they actually take an assumption on subsurface that is completely different from what you get once you're in there. They go out there and assume it's going to be, um, maybe smooth sailing. They come out with their equipment, start driving piles, start hitting rocks. We call those refusals. They have to get a different piece of equipment on, change the plan around. This site from the start, we're going to know you're going to need that drilling equipment from the start to go out there and address it. Now, again, this isn't anything that is, um, is unique, you know, operating, uh, constructing a solar facility in significant rock is something that's well-known. It's something that we've worked on, on other projects. And it's something where we're, you know, well familiar with the process of going out, testing and accommodating from that upfront. And that's usually the main part of this is planning for it upfront, getting the right piece of equipment onsite. And then, um, uh, you know, those equipment is really designed to move through at a standard kind of production rate. As long as you plan for it upfront, um, you're not likely to be surprised.
And if it's completely, you have to drill it completely, does that affect the length of the construction?
Um, so, you know, the, the stats that I, I believe Tyler gave were two to four weeks. So where that comes from is the site we were on last week, similar sized site, three megawatts. They didn't really have any, any rock that they were dealing with. So that was actually two weeks for them to install the, uh, the foundations on it. So we're giving a little bit of an extra window that we're anticipating here because they're going to go and have to do a pre-drill. So what that looks like typically is they're going to show up with a drill rig, drill down, and then they might either drive a post into it or actually install a ground screw in it. Now, those aren't necessarily series processes. Those are a little bit parallel. You start with a drill rig and you come behind it with your foundation installation. So it's a little bit more about more equipment and more crews working in parallel to an extent. That's not going to be a hundred percent efficient. And that's where that, that estimate range of, okay, typical site like this, that's clean, it's two weeks. Well, this might look more like two to four weeks because of that. I think supervisor lines, you had, you had mentioned that the Saturday and, um, you know, really.
During the drilling period, I mean, when people are out there working and aren't drilling, it's probably fine.
Yeah, a- absolutely. And so really it, it comes down to, you know, person days. Like if you don't work on a Saturday, they're going to either generally either put a few more crews to try and do more in parallel on the other days or extend slightly. Now, this is a relatively short period of time that we anticipate they're going to be out there installing foundations. And so, you know, the last thing we want to do is, is certainly have impacts to the neighbors. There is impacts during the construction time period. We anticipate that short, but that is a, a real time period. And if, if that's something that, um, is, uh, is something we can do to reduce the impacts on a Saturday, then, then we're happy to commit to not doing any drilling activities on Saturdays.
I think the neighbors would appreciate it. I know I would, I lived there. Done.
Okay.
I have one for Chris. Uh, sorry, Mr. Slade, going back to the decommissioning process, what, what could trigger, what else could trigger the use of that bond? Do we have any? I'm sure, I've seen, do we have any language here that talks about site not being producing or sitting idle for any amount of time?
Um, we do not have any language on produ- production. Uh, so, so we would not be tracking the production, saying if, you know, how efficient it's working, that type of thing. As far as the second fold of that question was, when does it trigger? It, it's going to be when the, when the site is no longer in use. That, that's not to say the efficiency side of things. But when the site is, is null and voided, then that would trigger, uh, the actual decommissioning, uh, itself. And I might be able to pull up a, a further decommissioning agreement.
Yeah. And, and Chris, if I may, there, there will be a decommission agreement that we'll enter into. So we have the opportunity to discuss what terms would trigger decommissioning. And that would that would be language similar to what we'd expect to be in the bond to.
I think that would have to be, well, one that we utilize in the past, if the project ceases to be operational for for more than eighteen consecutive months, ceases to operation is one, the the one that we we utilized in. I believe this was associated with the Mueller application that we actually have gotten to a decommissioning agreement. Of course, the decommissioning agreement is, as Mr. Dryden pointed out, uh, i- is an agreement that's acceptable by the county. And in most cases, uh, we have a framework of action, uh, a framework for the document, if you will, based on a a previously accepted decommissioning agreement. Or the applicant, project developer could certainly present one to us and we could compare and contrast. But but those type of issues, I believe, uh, could be addressed, um, in the decommissioning agreement. But again, the one that we have on the books now is a ceases to ceases to be operational in eighteen months.
And what's the length that that we're approving? I mean, we've got us, if we approve it, we've got they've got to start within a certain period of time.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, implementation of the project must incur within thirty six months from the date of the special permit approval. Project substantial completion must be occur within eighteen months of the date of implementation. Uh, with up to four month extension of substantial completion date upon written request by the applicant and landowner and landowners to the zoning administrator detailing the reasons for the extension.
So it could be like four and three quarters years before it ever finished, right? Based on that timeline, if my math is right.
Uh, twenty two months, eighteen months, including a eighteen months plus a potential four month extension.
And then is there an end date?
There is not currently an end date associated with planning commission's recommendation.
But there could be in it.
Uh, yes, sir. State law, as we discussed in the past, state law was, uh, in my opinion, clarified, uh, effective July first, twenty twenty four, that that, um, can include a period of validity for the special exception permits.
Some of my readings, which they might not be accurate either. A panel loses a half percent of efficiency a year. Is that correct?
That that's correct. And and the lifespan of these projects is is forty years.
So in forty years, we'll be operating at eighty percent.
Yeah, I you know, typically nowadays, the the, um, the technology has been improving pretty rapidly. So we're projecting about point three percent a year degradation. So you're talking between eighty and and ninety percent efficiency towards the end of its forty year life.
So I guess what I'm getting at then, when we start talking about when we're working on our decommissioning plan, if we, let's say if it's point three instead of point five, then in forty years, it should be at eighty eight percent. Could we say if it's ever operating below a certain level, it's time to decommission them and because the technology is constantly changing, you can't tell me they're not going to get better between now and forty years. And and why would someone want to be running something that was not as efficient as the latest after maybe twenty years?
I I think the owners would be able to make the call if they thought that, you know, that there was newer technology. I would, I'm not aware of any decommission agreements that would get into actual operational questions as to as to whether contingent on uh, certain production of of electricity. And, um, I mean, that's something we could consider, but I haven't I haven't done the legal analysis to see if we're even able to consider that type of a question. The other things that we were talking about, you know, timelines, um, to go, uh, not operating for a period of time. Uh, we can set timelines on special exceptions if they're not, they're not needing certain, it's not being utilized for certain purpose. Or we can set the timeline for how long we'll allow that social exception to be in place. That was, as Chris was mentioning, that was clarified by some of the some the new statutes and some opinions by legal experts. I would say I would have to look from a legal perspective, whether or not we can actually get into the operational from a from a, um, from a county perspective as to whether or not we want to be. That'd be more of a question for Kent, Chris and the county administration.
I have a question maybe for the CEO. And I, like Mr. Lyons, I I've done a little research and I've heard very good things about your company. So, you know. But you're the you're the front end of it. You're not what the community is going to be dealing with in five, ten, twenty years. And I know you said that, you know, most of Fortune five hundred or whatever buy these and and operate them. How many times are they sold? Like if if company A buys it, they run it for five years and they sell it to company B. And then they run it for a couple. How often are these projects sold? Or is it just the tax credits that are sold?
Uh, okay. Thanks for the question. Um, I'm going to think out loud here, uh, because I don't actually have a statistic to directly answer the question, which would be, all right, on average, how many times is a solar project LLC sold or refinanced? Certainly, I would start the answer by saying it is highly customary for that to occur at least once. And it usually happens right at the start or the completion of construction. Where the developer either maintains ownership and we're, I'm calling us the developer, the developer of record, the project sponsor, the applicant holds the project until construction starts or delivers it at mechanical completion. We've done both. That's why Tyler was was referencing that we have a sister company that also builds. It is also not atypical for a solar project LLC to be sold again during its operating life or to be refinanced. So that that does occur. Um, and I I would just rather use words that rather than a give you a statistic because I don't have a statistic, but, um, what the economic fundamentals of these projects are such that the entirety of the project cost is primarily paid for upfront. So for the next thirty five to forty years of the operating life of the project itself, that's when you generate the return on investment. There is a period during the first five to seven years of the operating life where those federal tax credits can be monetized. Um, and they they are used to help reduce the installed cost, which is which is ultimately translates to the rate payer because it allows for that electricity to be delivered at a lower price than it otherwise would. When when those credits have been utilized and retired, now the economics are very simple. The sun comes up, generates electricity, that power is sold. You should generate enough cash through the sale of power to fit to pay for operations, maintenance, insurance, asset management, et cetera. But it actually takes a long time into the investment time period before that return is fully, is I guess I'll call it fully realized. So there's a motivation essentially throughout the entirety of the operating life to keep this system up and running at its maximum efficiency. Because the only way in which revenue is generated is if when the sun's up, you are generating power and you are online. Uh, and usually your party to your, your project is party to a long term agreement to sell that electricity to somebody. So there are all kinds of contractual terms that you are counterparty to, including uptime, annual production, or there's financial penalties if you're not up. Um, so the where this sort of, I'll call it where the alignment tends to exist between the economics of a solar project and a lot of what you've heard here today is it's actually pretty simple. You get that return on investment over a very long time horizon and it is only achieved if you're up and running and producing power. Does that answer your question directly or modestly?
Okay, I mean, I'm just, you know, my concern is ten, twenty years down the road, there's an issue or problem. And, you know, we're not dealing with you.
Right.
You know, we're dealing with with someone totally different and how that's going to work, you know. I've got to know your company a little bit. You know, like I said, have heard very good reviews. I don't know the second, third or fourth owner of this, how they're going to operate or how they're going to get back in touch with us when we have an issue or problem or whatnot. That that's my concern.
Right. And and I I think maybe I could do a stronger job of answering that. Sort of the way I I just tried is one of the ways in which I think folks can get comfortable with the fact that this is the primary business model for solar development in the US has been for the last twenty five years. Is that, I'll call it economic rationality. Whoever owns this project is going to number one. So I guess there's contractual and economic rationality. Contractually, whoever owns this project LLC is counterparty to and beholden to every contract that it's that it's party to, including a special exception permit, including an interconnection agreement. So you you do not want to be in default of an agreement with the locality or an agreement to whom you're selling the power to. You you do not want to be in any contractual default. Because what happens then is you are no longer in compliance, you are no longer able to generate any revenue for that project and you're you're counting on that. So good behavior is effectively, um, insured, given that number one, whoever owns this project LLC is contractually bound the same way it would be if it was Suntribe. And number two, being in default to any of these contracts is completely counter to good investment sense, because if you're told you can no longer operate, now you're now you're losing money and you're potentially you're potentially on the hook for debt payments. You know, you, these are permanently financed small scale facilities, but they're financed the same way any big capital project would be. So, um, you can rest assured that whoever is owning and operating a solar project LLC is hyper aligned with good behavior, contract contractual conformance and being up and running and producing power.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, I also wanted to maybe take the opportunity to respond to just a couple of the of the public comment that that, um, that that there was, um, you know, the the safety of these panels was brought up a couple of times. I just want to reiterate that this is not new technology, that these panels are safe, um, to both humans and the environment. There's really nothing kind of exotic or new or new going on here. Um, I I heard somebody bring up PFAS and and there are no PFAS in solar modules. So just I I really wanted to state that. Um, I know that we already talked touched on traffic. In terms of zoning, you know, this is zoned ag transitional. And it's where the county is designating a buffer between rural and urban areas. It's it's also within a suburban service area, which is where the county is designating development. I think a interesting part of this property, and it's come up a lot in terms of the construction of this facility, is the the shallow depth of the bedrock. And I think in terms of ag land, it's it's not the best ag land. And we're willing as the developer and as a solar project to take on the responsibility of of constructing a project on that. Rockbridge is beautiful. It's why I love this county. And it's also why we located this project in the place that we did, adjacent to existing commercial uses, adjacent to I D one, I sixty four, and proximate to route eleven. I also wanted to speak briefly on the levelized cost of electricity pamphlet that I sent out. It kind of piggybacks on. Yeah, there's there's a stack.
Some over there if anybody wants that. I I would actually like you to do that. We we hear all say, well, solar wouldn't exist without the credits. These are, this energy wouldn't exist. All energy projects are the same in that regard. If you don't mind going over this.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It's 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 pretty straightforward, um, just in the fact that and it piggybacks on what Danny was saying really, really well. Just the fact that solar, absent of any type of government subsidy, is the cheapest form of electricity. And and there's numerous, um, both renewable and and non renewable sources outlined on, um, on that on that graphic. And then just briefly speaking to subsidies for energy types in the United States, energy is seen as as a common good and and that's why it's been subsidized for the last one hundred years.
Would you, we didn't hear too much, uh, about the the engineering of the water your water system in this. I know it's in here, the of the runoff of your controlling of of runoff. Would you go over that just quickly, briefly? Um, I know there were several people that was very worried about the the water runoff and I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, I'm 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 pulling out a map here because I want to make sure that I that I reference the correct, um, the correct map in the conceptual site plan. It's on on page P one to six. Um, and so Rockbridge cares a lot about about stormwater management, um, as does the Commonwealth. And because of Rockbridge's stringent stormwater management, um, kind of restrictions, we brought up something that wouldn't usually occur at this point in development and actually had stormwater management features designed specifically for the project. At this point, usually on a map, those would just kind of be blocks showing where the outfalls would be. But these were, these were specifically designed by a stormwater management expert, Tetra Tech. And and they're included both in our conceptual site plan as well as a specific sheet showing the exact drainage basins based on the topography of the property. So, yeah, not haphazardly placed, very specifically engineered to, um, to meet DEQ regulations for a project of this size.
I don't have any questions. I have a comment from Mr. Slade. And when when, uh, planning commission was was going over this, and I appreciate the planning commission, the the work that they do and and the process that they bring us information, but, uh, twenty conditions, it, I mean, was it ever discussion that, you know, maybe this is just too much?
Uh, no, sir. No, I mean, and and you you will see, uh, as we progress, you know, as a as a planning and zoning development team, if you will. Uh, and and as the as the information comes out, you will see, you know, comparatively speaking to previous projects that maybe had you know, less than ten conditions, uh, conditions are attempt, uh, our attempt to address some of the concerns that were raised. And and I I will touch base on the solar ordinance. You know, we we do have a draft solar ordinance that I think in the first quarter of twenty twenty five that that will be taken to a public hearing. With that being said, we we have consistently stated that there's there's nothing that we know of that you can do by ordinance that you can't do with conditions based on a unique site, a a a a project in mind. That's not to say there are not other zoning tools that you could do countywide by ordinance that you certainly can't do by a condition uh, associated with a particular project. With that being said, we've also said consistently after and is our full anticipation that we have a a solar ordinance. I think some, if not most of these conditions will will either be reiterated or included in in the conditions associated with a unique project. To answer your question, no, there there was another, never a a time that says we got to a magic number. This is, this is just too much. As as you know, reading the conditions, each one of those conditions a- address a separate matter in most cases. There there might be, you know, four combined for fire rescue type operations. Uh, but most of them are unique to a specified condition or a special specialized, um, issue that has been brought up.
And and if I may just a- add on to that, you know, uh, as the applicant, we were happy, you know, with all of the conditions because it was matching and actually even making the project better from, you know, that it was matching the project that we proposed. We want the project that we proposed to be what gets constructed and what goes in the ground and you know, all of the additional constriction, uh, risk, excuse me, proposed conditions, both from us and from the county, did that and then made the project better.
And and I will will, uh, say that, you know, we 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 have some, uh, newer planning commission members on the commission. But I've been very impressed with the with the with ones that have been there for years and the newer newer committee meetings, uh, commission members, excuse me, that they're saying, okay, well, this was stated during a presentation, but I'm not seeing it a condition. How do we verify this? And that's exactly, you know, dealing with a a developer that that focuses I focuses on the development of the project. You want a strong set of conditions that that transfers to the unknown owner, if you will.
If you don't mind, when when I sat with you with the Davis's last Monday.
Yes, ma'am.
There was talk, and I know that that has not been finalized a plan, a landscaping plan for the Davis's. That is not in these conditions. And I would like to know before we vote of whether or not that is something, or at least there is a a level of screening that could happen on their property. And and how we could include that in yet another condition, maybe condition twenty one. I don't know, but that that I know that that was not firmed up yet. And I would just.
I think Mr. Dryden would agree, it would be somewhat problematic to impose a condition on it on it adjacent piece of property. In fact, we did that with the Moller application in Walker's Creek area, and they ended up having to come back. It was just that landscaping on a on a adjacent piece of property. And through the finance world of the solar company, they they actually had to come back and remove that condition. It has to do with a long term easement. If if the landowners, you know, willing to do a long term easement, the consistent right to entry of the property.
No, this this, that's not what the condition was about. The condition wasn't that they would install or that there that there would be an allowance for landscaping on their property.
On the Davis property.
On the Davis property.
Yes, addressed that when he spoke to us and said he wasn't interested. He didn't think he should have to be and stuff put up on his land. He said this evening.
And that's what that was my understanding of the on the Moller and adjacent property owner on that. That was the situation on that side.
All right, it it was it was not my understanding at the time of the meeting that we met with them that they they would like some kind of screening on their property, but.
Understood. And I think I that was my understanding as well. As I said, you know, unfortunately, that that didn't materialize, but but I don't perceive that meaning that we can't, you know, provide buffering. I would offer up that we so we can increase the southern buffer of on the project. So obviously, you know, we can't do anything on the Davis property. But I would commit here to a proposed condition that the that the southern vegetative buffer on the project parcel be increased to a double row of staggered vegetative buffering. If if that was something that the board would consider.
Okay. Anything else? Gentlemen. So possibilities, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, is that along with the well, the thirty thousand guarantee on the well that you, I think, already have a draft for. There are two things that I've heard the supervisors discuss. One would be drilling limited to Monday through Friday. And then this last one, a two row staggered planting on on that area. Those I believe are the only condition changes that I've heard anybody mention. Is that correct?
I believe that's accurate. Yes, ma'am.
I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Please have a seat.
Just just some comments I'd like to make. First, this has been quite a process and I've learned a lot about cattle. Enough to know that something I never want to do, but I appreciate the I appreciate the 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 show Walters having me out there and the way they presented things and their sides. Appreciate Mr. Stout having me to his house and and sending all the information out. Appreciate Mr. Davis on the southern end and the other residents who have reached out concerning the noise. Again, my main concerns is one. We're going to give up thirty five acres of farmland temporarily to save, you know, over a hundred acres of farmland. I would hope Mr. Huffman would continue talking to the show Walters because we're not really saving a hundred acres if if they can't. If nobody can use it because he doesn't put up the proper fencing. And I think I think, in my opinion, the show Walters are very reasonable people and Mr. Huffman's seems to be reasonable at time. And hopefully y'all can get together and make that work. I think it's important. I hope everyone with the traffic plan and whatnot would get their heads together and include Mr. Stout because I would think that would be might be a better way to enter that property and right through the middle. And it's just something that he has to look at constantly for anywhere from three, four, five, six months, because that's how long the construction would take. I appreciate everybody working with Mr. Davis. You know, you you can you can only do what you can do. He'll be he'll be affected and glad to see that we're protect would be protecting as well and offer additional buffering. And I just hope in the big scheme, because there's a lot of people that aren't adjoining, but nearby, they who already put up with a lot of traffic and a lot of noise every day. And they need to be able to have contact information to reach out when they have a concern. I mean, noise is part of construction projects. We we've built two schools that within the city that I was involved with, where we did blasting. And we tore down entire buildings and we shook neighborhoods. And I think you got to look at the end result. Where are you going to get to? What you're going to get to by making this sacrifice? On the same time, not all of us are young. So every day is a blessing and have to they, we got to understand that put up with even one day of inconvenience, the older you get like me is is an inconvenience. And us whole people aren't as, I guess gracious as some of the younger people putting up with stuff. But I would hope B dot does their job and and look, because I don't want to see anybody that lives on that road impacted because we can't get emergency help to them. And that's really a V dot responsibility. And I still think we could get that entrance closer to Lincoln and that that it might might cost a little more, but it might be a whole lot nicer for the people in the community. Those are my, you know, we can't, we don't own the view shed. We love views. You know, I like a view of my house. But, you know, I'm not willing to write a check to buy an easement to say nobody can build on that land. It's unfortunate. It's going to take probably five years before those plants get up to high enough to cover the fence. But we need to make sure if it's approved that we stay on top of things and hold their feet to the fire that they do what they're supposed to do. Because I, you know, it wouldn't bother me. I won't be sitting behind this desk. But if they don't do what they do, the supervisors need to go ahead and revoke the special permit. I don't care how much money they got involved. And decommission it right away. So that's my two cents.
I have the honor of serving the citizens of South River District, which includes Rockbridge County. I don't agree that I get up here and make the decision of what I want, you know, not listen to this, to my voters and my citizens. I have no intentions of running for this office again, but I feel that that's my obligation to serve the citizens. A few weeks ago, when the foliage was in peak, wife and I rode for a couple hours. It was on the parkway down Route fifty six. And twice during that two hour trip or whatever, we commented about how forced that we are to live in Rockbridge County, such a beautiful county. And why we would want to put an eyesore on our county is solar power. Hey, I look at it in Fairfield every day when I drive to Lexington. And I got burned on that deal. Like, that's the last time. And for Mr. Stout, for this to be built so close to him, it is going to devalue that man's property. I don't care what you say, and nobody will ever convince me of any difference. And the same way with Mr. Davis.
For me, it's about balance. It's about deciding when people come before us all the time and they want to do something with their property. And it's it's, I feel, our job to figure out a way that they can do it unless the impacts are too severe and longstanding. For me, the impacts are not longstanding and they are inconvenient. And for three or four weeks, they may be really annoying. But the long term, we sat up here and heard Dominion say that by golly, they're going to get, they're going to need, it's not will they get, they will, they will need double their electricity and that will come in a variety of ways. It always will be necessary at the way we will be using electric or need electricity in the next 10 years. So again, it's about balancing Mr. Hussman's and his family's rights with those of the neighbors. And people ask me all the time, but you wouldn't want it next to you. And I disagree. I wouldn't go out seeking it. I would be absolutely fine if the farmer next to me said that he wanted to put a portion of his property in that. I don't the view shed, I I do own some of my view shed. I can't own all of my view shed. And what I look for in projects that are disturbing to the neighborhood or what are the long term impacts that had that people will have, where they have to live with polluted air, where they have to have noise and in in light pollution. And that this, this is a good project for for the neighbors compared to the things that could and will inevitably happen if this doesn't happen. So for me, I would always pick this option. And I have, I want to thank all the neighbors for 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 coming forward. And we have tried very hard, I have tried very hard. I'm sure all of us have to hear our neighbors and to try to mitigate the problems that they may see. And I feel and I think the company for really, I feel that they've really stepped up and they have been very helpful on doing that. So that that is how I I feel. I think it will be a very short term. How you define short term inconvenience, but with a long term gain for not only Mr. Huffman, but the community. Anybody else? All right. And if there's no other comments or anything else. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is that with the conditions that we have outlined?
With with the conditions.
It would be beneficial to to talk about some of the conditions. If you don't mind, I'll share my screen, just to make sure we're all on the same page. Or do we want to, is it appropriate to have a second or is this the?
No, no, I, if you don't mind.
We've gone through through them all, right?
I just want to make sure the hours of operation, the the double row Leland Cypress's and then the bond itself, I assume, is what we're talking about. This is what I'm about to hand you is a approval course in on the board docs package. You have a ordinance to approve and an ordinance to deny. This is well, this is an ordinance to approve that has been modified to include the the bonding requirement associated with the with the well based on.
Chris, can you zoom in?
Zoom in on that.
Based on the discussion, number, we have, we have two conditions associated with the timeframe. Currently, they're number eleven that states all excavation, construction and deliveries and decommissioning activities shall be limited to the hours of seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Saturday. And a number twelve that states excavation, construction and deliveries and decommissioning activities shall be prohibited on Sundays. So so based on the discussion, both could be modified into one condition that states all pre drilling. This is what I've come up with. And that's what what I wanted to chat about, obviously. All pre drilling foundation work and or the use of hydraulic hammers slash rock hammers or one and the same, I believe, shall be limited to the hours of seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, comma, with neither Saturday nor Sunday operations. All other excavation, construction, deliveries and or decommissioning activities shall be limited to the hours of seven AM to seven PM on Monday through Saturday with no Sunday operations. Don't mind. There with the hairball. The while I'm doing this, at the same time, I will say the draft condition that's included in the ordinance I just gave you is verbatim, the draft condition number twenty two associated with the a surety associated with thirty thousand dollars to cover any damages to the water well on parcel number sixty two dash twelve dash B two is verbatim what was presented during my presentation. And then lastly, I'm going to stop sharing. I'm going to do this real quick. Lastly, I'd like to share my screen or the PDF itself, just to make sure we're all on the same page about what is being approved. This is condition number one. States that it draft condition number one, as recommended by the planning commission, states the development of the property sixty two dash twelve dash B one fifty six acres per tax records for which the application is being made shall be in substantially accordance with the conceptual conceptual site plan titled War. titled Warm Run Solar LLC, prepared by Sun Tribe Development dated, uh, April fourth, twenty-twenty-four and revision date of July third. Uh, those, those dates are here. So this is the landscaping plan, uh, associated with the, uh, conceptual site plan. And you will see, uh, per one-hundred linear feet, this is a, a twenty-five-foot buffer that includes a double row of eleven evergreen trees and then, uh, six large evergreen shrubs. So when we start talking about a double row, uh, of, of trees along the, the Davis property line, uh, the, the landscape plan shows, shows essentially that double row and then some six large evergreen shrubs in front or behind, however, whichever way you're looking at it. Is that correct?
Could you step to the mic, please?
If, if you scroll up, yeah, um, the, the intention was for the southern vegetative buffer to match what was proposed on the northern and western vegetative buffers. So the southern was defined as a single staggered row, while the northern was defined as a double staggered row.
Okay, thank you. And so that could be modified. Uh, I would say number one would be modified, uh, the development of the property that I just read, the condition, draft condition number one, uh, with the, provided that, and we're, this is the southern, yes, southern, provided that the southern buffer uh, be modified to.
Did you say match the northern border as presented?
Southern buffer match.
Is that what's being contemplated here?
I believe so, that the southern, that the proposed southern buffer match the proposed northern buffer, is that correct?
I would say as shown in the conceptual plant list.
I think, I think the conditionary references their plans, would you say that the, just stated that, that, uh, the north?
Just, I, I would say state that the southern buffer will match the northern buffer as detailed in the plan. You'd want to use substantially the same language we have.
All right, so, uh, the new, it adds a sentence, uh, I'll read it in its entirety. The development of the property, parcel sixty-two dash twelve dash B one, fifty-six acres per tax records for which the applicant, uh, application is being made, shall substantially be in accordance with the conceptual site plan titled Warm Run Solar LLC, prepared by Sun Tribe Development, dated April fourth, twenty-twenty-four, revision date of July third, twenty-four, twenty-four period, provided that the proposed southern buffer matched the proposed northern buffer, uh, as shown in the reference conceptual site plan. And of course, your, your draft ordinance in front of you also has number twenty in it. Uh, that talks about, uh, the twenty-two eighty-eight point eight, uh, contribution to the county as provided by the Code of Virginia.
The well, which one is that?
Uh, the well is number twenty-one.
Oh, twenty-one. I think mine, I think mine's numbered different.
I'm sorry, I renumbered it, I renumbered it, it's your last condition on it. I, I removed, I removed.
Yeah, so the twenty-one for the, uh, for the forty-five thousand dollar.
Uh, sorry, I renumbered these in a work in progress. Uh, so number twenty-one, uh, talks about the twenty-two eighty-eight Code of Virginia, about, uh, the contribution of forty-five thousand dollars. And then the draft you have, number twenty-two discusses the well, my apologies.
Thank you.
Because I modified, uh, I, I took out a condition. We've modified, uh, number eleven and twelve i- into a new number eleven and removed twelve.
Are you finished with your modifications?
Yeah, that's all that I, that I know of.
For Mr. Lyons, your motion is to approve with those?
Yes.
Uh, no, no, sir, this is, the public hearing is closed, so. Correct, is there a second?
And, and for clarification, this would be to adopt the ordinance with the modifications as discussed?
Yes.
I continue to support property rights and my admission, I'll second.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. McDaniel?
No.
Mr. Day?
No.
And I vote yes. We will now take a short break, five-minute break, and then we'll come back to our board comments. You know, we're letting them clear. I will gavel it down, but this was their recommendation, we'll see more at work.
This is the longest one yet, isn't it?
We're going with nine forty-five.
I think we did. Oh, oh, that's a lot of paper.
I'm sorry, but I think it's the right thing. Well, you're entitled to your opinion.
Uh, no, the, the, the board has the absolute right to modify conditions, remove all conditions or add to the conditions. No ma'am, we will update them appropriately. When we do, each month, we'll go to the planning commission, say the. Uh, they's the ones who made a recommendation of the conditions, yes ma'am. The, the planning commission has an advisory role, meaning they would make a recommendation. No, no ma'am, the board supervisor has absolute right to remove conditions, modify conditions or, or add conditions as we did tonight. Uh, the decommissioning does, yes. Now, the, the, which bond you're talking about, the, there, uh, the, the landscaping bond, probably not. The, the water bond, probably not, but the decommissioning, absolutely, yes. That's what I keep saying to myself.
That works in some countries.
I just sent that to you via email, Randy.
Mr. Kramer, we're going to finish, finish our meeting here. Uh, do we have any unfinished business? Anything you want to report? From your committee?
I've got a report from the horse there, but I wore it, so I'll save it for next meeting. It's not necessarily time sensitive.
All right.
Just pause.
If not, I would like to entertain a motion, please.
Move to adjourn.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Have a happy Thanksgiving, everyone.